So, I'm all about elevating the discourse. I think civility is good, but I think when you're talking about the basic safety of people that feel marginalized and oppressed, systemic, which is empirically, you can actually demonstrate this factually, right?
Well, I certainly believe in oppression. I believe in marginalization. The term I like to use is social immigration and stuff. I'm not sure that rises to the level of... That can be true of people's experience and still not be sufficient rationale to not cooperate with people.
Right.
I mean, the federal effort's there for a reason. I know, I understand the legal issues that are down, that we're not cooperating with the law.
We're not defying the law.
We're not defying the law. It's really questionable. But it is still a selection act to cooperate.
So if you're undocumented and you're living downtown and you wanna maybe help the police in solving a crime, but you're fearful about your status as undocumented, who's made safer by that?
It's a big two-way sword.
Well, no, not really. It's not because...
Well, because, well, it is. Because you're arriving at an end point. You shouldn't be there first. You're jumping to an end point, a discussion that you can conceive.
So just the fact that the person is there at all, right? That's the problem.
And, you know, if you're going to speak out loud, the higher level of sentiment, the person should come forward and cooperate and help the police anyway, despite the repercussions themselves. I understand human nature that didn't want to, again. I don't know if I would. I might chicken out too.
Yeah, it's putting a pretty high bar.
I might chicken out too, but...
I don't know a lot of white, middle-class people that would put their own necks on the line. People that are legally protected. It puts a higher bar on people that aren't...
It's not the same level of analogy, but I can think of at least once in my life, and I can think of plenty of times where I screwed up, or lied, or got caught, you know, my gut instinct and fear kicked in or whatever. I've done it, probably like anybody else and stuff. But there was a time I turned down a promotion at work, which made me very suspicious to my other folks, because I believe that, because I worked in human services, in the position I was in, I believed afforded me the ability to actually protect the life of my particular client who was serving at the time. I thought that was important.
No, I'm all good. You guys got it.
I thought that was more important than accepting the offer. And even when I explained it, it made me suspicious to my higher level of conviction. Hey, it's not 100% analogous, but, and there was a time I told a kind of a big lie when I was in preschool. And then later I come home, and I had to admit it to my father. And then he put me in jail, and boy, I hid with fear, trepidation, and so on.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I can appreciate that with you, there's a level of closeness. I think the evidence supports my side, which is why I'm on the side. Right? But as far as the level of civility is concerned, I'm all for that. I see support for the election about how it's always been the way it has been.
Yeah, I doubt it, that's true.
Yeah, I have. I agree. Why you said you doubt if that's true?
No, I doubt if it's true. That's only the most people who've done it. I know most people have done it, or at least have owned it someplace, whether they were officially affiliated in any way, I would say.
How you doing? You got a coffee this week?
I figured it out.
This week, yeah.
It's certainly only anecdotal, and, as I said, we'll talk about it in a personal opinion. But anyways, along those lines and stuff, it has, I will say, been my experience, that I experienced more from the progressive level, so it's not a personal thing.
That's a debate that's growing all over the country right now.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And I think you'll find sympathetic here, even on the progressive side, what's happening at Holyoke. But then, folks on the left might argue that you've got more reasons to be angry, that experiences are diminished, stepped down, and marginalized. Meanwhile, we have families being ripped apart, we have people getting killed in the street. And, God, we should be honest. And we shouldn't...
But I think social imaging, and the impact that has to marginalized people, is one of the fundamental truths of, maybe not to everybody, but to a lot of people, in what I would consider the leading of the progressive movement. I think sometimes the tactics, the discourse, these things that are used are such that they feel actual negative impact, typically, or they feel impunity, otherwise won't even get involved or killed that much. But because they're killed, they may not, or something like that, they do that more than others.
Who backlashers?
Typically backlash, yeah, sort of lightly. They might have just stayed on the sidelines, but they get activated by the wave and stuff.
Hey, is there a seat there?
I would say that, I think, definitely, it is true. I think immigration is a whole game, right, and agenda, than any march ever did. I think you versus not threatening, I think marches have had to do with them. I think it's true. Definitely in the opinion, nothing has been achieved without... Yes. Yeah. Negative social...
You don't have to... Right, that's out.
No, that, I was, I was, with a person, now that the...
I have a good tour, right? I thought you were Mark's guy. She's a little wild. She's looking good. She's looking good. Oh, yeah. Mark, this is my friend, Phil.
Yeah, what's up? I'm Mark, how you doing, man?
Oh, good, doing great. Mark and I go way back.
Good.
Four years of running either of us here. Mark used to be my boss.
Oh, yeah?
He was pretty good at me. I got through the experience of this.
We don't allow signs. No signs. No signs. We don't, too. No signs, we ain't.
Who?
That's Monday.
Go to the public comments.
No further ado. I'd like to call this November 17 session of the Hoyo City Council to order. The clerk will call the roll and record those members present.
Alexander.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan.
Here.
Greeney.
Here.
Jordane.
Here.
Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Soto.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyo.
Mr. President.
And the city council.
Yes, Council Lady.
Good evening, tonight. How are you?
I'm wonderful. How are you?
Good, thank you. I'd like to suspend our rules and allow the councilors-elect to join us inside the rails.
Second.
And if, just, we have an item on the agenda that addresses this, if we could just suspend that rule to go up to that item?
Motion to suspend the necessary rules and go on to item number 23. 23, thank you.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend our rules to go to item number 23. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Someone would make a motion to adopt item 23?
Motion to adopt.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. And we'd like to welcome our councilors-elect from Ward 2, Nelson Roman. And our counselor-at-large-elect, Michael Sullivan. Welcome to both of you. And I did wanna just note that Counselor Soto unfortunately had a death in the family and gives his regrets. He will not be able to make it this evening. So, we welcome our two councilors-elect. My congratulations to each and every one of you following the election. And now we begin. We have one item currently on the table. This is item number one, which is regarding a Finance Committee report regarding a pawnbroker license. Unless there's a motion to remove it, it will remain on the table. Mr. Chairman, anything on this?
I believe we... Okay, we did. All right.
I believe we were looking for a letter regarding this matter that the gentleman had asked that it be given leave to withdraw. And we do now have the letter. We asked him just for our record-keeping that he actually put that in writing to us. So, I think it would be appropriate, now that we have his communication...
Motion to take off the table?
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to remove item number one from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Let me read to you item number one. Item number one is a Committee report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred a pawnbroker license application of Ty Kang at 311 High Street. This was considered by the Committee and recommended that the application be given leave to withdraw at the request of the petitioner. This is signed by all five members of the Finance Committee. At the last meeting, we did not have the communication from Mr. Kang, but let me read this now. It is regarding Emmanuel Jewelry that was located at 311 High Street. It states, "I am not interested in the pawnbroker license. I only want a second-hand dealer's license. Thank you, Ty Kang." And that is that.
Motion to give leave to withdraw?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give leave to withdraw. Any other discussion? I'm gonna ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on this. Yes, vote is in favor of adopting the Committee report, which is to give it leave to withdraw, and no vote is to deny.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
And Counselor Leahy will be voting first.
I think he knew that already.
He's good.
He's good, he knew that.
Really good.
He called his name.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
14 years.
By your vote, you have given Mr. Kang's application leave to withdraw. That now brings us to public comment. And I will now turn to, we had 11 individuals sign up for public comment this evening. As you know, under the rule, we allocate 15 minutes for public comment. As a general rule, that's seven people for approximately two minutes each.
Motion to suspend the rules and allow the 11 to speak?
Okay.
At a limit of two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. All right, so we're gonna allow all the people who did sign up, two minutes. And I would ask that everybody please keep it to the two minutes. The other thing I do wanna remind people is, under our rules of decorum, you're asked to keep it to the issue. No personalities, no addressing or attacking people by name or anything like that. We have a nice civil conversation regarding the issue at hand on any issue that you wanna speak about, okay? So I would just remind folks with that caveat. First up is Paulo Ferrario of 25 Morgan Street. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a bit of an accent, so if you don't understand what I say, raise your hands and I'll repeat. I'm actually here for, compared to what's on the agenda, something rather trivial, but I'm here for several residents of Morgan Street, and I have the name, I won't read them just to save time, but it's about, are you Counselor McGee, right? Nice to meet you. We're here about the motion you put on the ballot to start the process to turn Morgan Park into a community garden. And we're here to ask to maybe temporarily remove the motion, partially because nobody on the street was notified about it. And, you know, one of my neighbor tonight just said, "If we just had a sign at the park, we all would know it." But my neighbors asked me to say that we're not necessarily opposed to a community garden. A few of my neighbor are opposed to it, partially, you know, who lives just right in front, they really enjoy the open space. But we all recognize the park as an asset, and we like it. We also understand that it is underutilized, and we're open to things. We have dream of our own. Like, personally, I would like to see maybe a rotating sculpture garden, would be great. Somebody would like to bring back the old skating rink, might be too difficult to do. But, so, we take pride in the piece of land, and if somebody, we still don't know who called Counselor McGee to make the motion. We've been calling around the street, it's not somebody who lives on the street, we still don't know who made the motion. So, we would like to be involved in the process, we would like to consider it even, but maybe it's a little too soon.
Okay. Well, we thank you for your time and thank you for sharing your thoughts with us.
Kevin? I'm not, just, just real quick.
Generally, we don't get...
I'm not debating. It's not in order to put a community garden in there. It's just in order to see if you can legally.
Okay.
That was the question by some of the people.
Okay.
So it's not in order to put one in there, it's just, could you, because it is parkland.
So it's just a question?
Just a question, that's all it is.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying, Counselor. The next speaker is Gabrielle, excuse me, Gabriel Quaglia of 13 Harrison Avenue. Gabriel.
How'd I end up second? Thank you. I'd like to thank all you councilors for being here tonight, for all your public service. I want you to know that I appreciate all of it, and everything, all you guys do. Talking about the order for leave to withdraw that's come before the council tonight, I spoke yesterday briefly, and I just wanna reiterate what I said yesterday, is that I know that people in certain communities, the community that I'm from in Springfield, wasn't the greatest neighborhood that I grew up in, that we had a lot of fear of police. And the police have a very hard job, and it's hard for them to connect with people, and to make them feel at ease to speak with them. And that's a fact. You know, I can tell you experientially, and anyone who, you know, who's been in the same situation, or any police will actually agree and tell you that. It can be hard. And I think anything that we can do to allay the fears of the public, to make them more comfortable with speaking with our law enforcement officers, we should do. And it will only increase public safety. So I think that the, I'd like to encourage you all to vote with the leave to withdraw. I wanna thank you very much again.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next speaker who signed up is Deidra Scolardi of 190 West Franklin Street. Deidra?
Hi there, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to apologize in advance for the councilors that were here last night. I'm gonna just reread what I had written and prepared for yesterday, just to make the people that were not here yesterday aware of how I personally feel about the issue that we're speaking out about with the leave to withdraw. The term "illegal alien" has unfortunately become a common occurrence in our basic discourse on immigration and the status of undocumented individuals. What one can fail to realize is that the term "illegal alien" is not only highly inaccurate, but deeply offensive. It does not matter if the term is used intentionally or accidentally. Using the words "illegal" and "alien" only negatively affect and shape public opinion on immigration. When someone refers to an immigrant as an illegal alien, they are using the term as a noun. In effect, what this is saying is that the person themselves is illegal, and not their actions. Calling people "human beings," "illegal aliens," implies that their mere existence is criminal. Now, let's just think about this for a minute. We do not even refer to some of our murderers in society as illegals. What is also important to note is that it is estimated that almost half of the undocumented immigrants in the U.S. today actually entered with lawful status at one point and merely overstayed their visas. They're not criminals, they're not committing any crimes. No criminal offense has been committed by them. And being in the U.S. while being of status is a civil infraction. It is not criminal. So please, vote with the public safety's recommendation to withdraw. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Juan Sanchez of 203 Pine Street. Juan, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I kinda wrote something, too. I usually don't write something, I usually speak out of topic, but let me pull that up for you guys real quick here. So my name is Juan Sanchez, I'm here to speak in regards to the leave to withdraw. I think the item is item 16B on the agenda.
I think that's right, yep.
And because I know others will come with facts, I thought I'd get a little personal with it. As a Puerto Rican man, I can honestly say I've never feared being deported. It's never something that I've ever had to think about, and I've taken for granted without realizing it. But, for me, the thought of anyone being deported is just wrong and inhumane. Also, regarding whirling, calling someone illegal implies that the person is illegal, kinda like what Deidra said, just to kind of, unfortunate, you know, the truth is, we live in a country with a justice system where stealing doesn't make someone illegal, murder doesn't make someone illegal, even terrorism doesn't make someone illegal. Their actions are illegal, and only ones proven guilty. No human is illegal, nor an alien. The phrase itself has a very racist history, which you can look up very easily online, and it's unfortunate to even use that off. Although it may not be her intention, or any counselor's intention by presenting such an order, it is divisive and has racial undertones, especially considering our large Latin primarily, you know, our large Latin population. I also fear of profiling, you know, how do exactly we determine who is illegal? Ask every person of color, every person who may not look like what we consider an American for their social security number, for an ID, or for a green card, and I don't think the police should be wasting their time on doing any of that. I asked the council to join us in unison with the community, and well, yes, to keep the leave to withdraw, not because it's, because it's not about picking which law to enforce, it's about picking to treat one another with respect as humans and as residents here in Holyoke who contribute to this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Our next speaker is Mark Clinton of 101 Cabot Street, apartment 403. Mark, welcome.
Excuse me, thank you. I'd like to express my appreciation for being allowed to speak on this issue. I've taught at Holyoke Community College for 20 years, and I've now lived in Holyoke for eight, and I would like to join the other speakers in requesting the council to grant the leave to withdraw this motion. I think the issue that's raised actually speaks to the kind of community that we want to be. Do we want to be seen as people who are open and welcoming to others, or do we want to be seen as a community that's closed in around itself, driven by stereotypes and fear? And I would much prefer to think we want to be an open, inclusive community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Our next speaker is Richard Purcell of 99 Martin Street. Richard?
Richard Purcell, 99 Martin Street. I've been living here this time since 1991. I'm a United States Army veteran. I proudly served in the Army, and I proudly ran for office in this city a few times. I'm speaking on behalf of item 16J to give a leave to withdraw. As I said last night, I think it's a racist order. I think it's gonna guarantee racial profiling, and I also gave all the addresses of all the city councilors last night, because they are the immigrants that we're trying to tell are illegal. We only have one planet, and we're all human beings, and you can't be illegal on the only place you can live. So I give, I respectfully ask for you to give a leave to withdraw on item 16J, and I won't, I won't try to speak against people tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Richard. Our next speaker is Maurice Taylor of 46 Canal Street. Maurice, are you at North Canal or South Canal?
North.
North.
Well, it's, oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The street sign says Canal, but when you call somebody, they don't, they never find it, so sometimes it's North Canal.
Okay, very good.
And the odds and even addresses on the same side of the street, so it makes it even harder.
Welcome.
Thank you. I wanna say congratulations to the councilors who won their seats back, and the new ones that are here. Congratulations, thank you for your service to the city. I was reading the article in Mass Live about this issue, and one of the things that drew my attention was that, you know, the councilwoman who opposes Mayor Morris's ordinance, said that there is no issues with the police in the city. And I respectfully disagree. I've been stopped numerous times for no reason at all, whether by local police or state police. One of the issues is that people don't fill out anything. I went to try to fill out, I did oppose to one of the police officers, one of the cases. I won two of them, I lost one, and I went to oppose it at a higher court, and I was given the wrong information, and I couldn't oppose it. But the other reason that many people do not come up against the police is because they're abused even further, whether it's in Springfield or Holyoke, Massachusetts. So if you don't know that people are being abused in Holyoke by Holyoke police, you're living under a rock. And I don't mean to be offensive, but that is a reality to some of us, too. I grew up in foster care, and it's another system in which people don't pay attention to. And abusing the rate that goes on in foster care is about as equal to what goes on to illegal immigrants in detention centers. The abuse is pretty much the same. So if we're not paying attention to what goes on to children in this country, imagine what we're not paying attention to, quote-unquote, "illegal immigrants." So, I respectfully like to, you know, ask you all to really withdraw that. And I just wanna leave you with this. I'm a poet, and this is why I wanna express myself, and the voices of many people. "As deep in this society's secrets and bureaucracy, and the facts that throw the teachings, men to chains, feed to the besiegen, when the government we love so much is corrupt, we must distrust." Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Maurice. Our next speaker is Owen Broadhurst of 1328 North Hampton Street. Owen, welcome.
Thirty-four years ago last month, 200 Algerians were slaughtered in Paris. They were massacred. I felt compelled to come back and speak tonight because I could not sleep last night. I could not sleep last night because I cannot fathom my friends who are undocumented and who are hardworking, educated, taxpaying, law-abiding residents being ripped away from the only place they have ever known as home and placed in detention facilities where despicable things happen and private prison corporations profit, and I cannot fathom seeing my friends who are undocumented and came here for a better life punished by deportation. This should prevent each and every one of you in this room from sleeping at night, too. With that, I urge you all to vote in support of accepting the Public Safety Committee's recommendation for a leave to withdraw on last night's agenda item number six. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maurice Taylor of forty-six Canal Street. Maurice, are you at North Canal or South Canal?
North.
North.
Well, it's...
Okay. Thank you.
The street sign says Canal, but when you call somebody, they don't... They never find it, so sometimes it's North Canal. It's weird.
Okay. Very good.
And the odds and even addresses on the same side of the street, so it makes it even harder.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want to say congratulations to the councilors who won their seats back and the new ones that are here. Congratulations. Thank you for your service to the city. I was reading the article in Mass Live about this issue, and one of the things that drew my attention was that, you know, the councilwoman who opposes Mayor Morris's ordinance said that there is no issues with the police in the city, and I respectfully disagree. I've been stopped numerous times for no reason at all, whether by local police or state police. One of the issues is that people don't fill out anything. I went to try to fill out... I did oppose the one of the police officers, one of the cases. I won two of them. I lost one, and I went to oppose it at a higher court, and I was given the wrong information, and I couldn't oppose it. But the other reason that many people do not come up against the police is because they're abused even further, whether it's in Springfield or Holyoke, Massachusetts. So, if you don't know that people are being abused in Holyoke by Holyoke police, you're living under a rock, and I don't mean to be offensive, but that is a reality to some of us, too. I grew up in foster care, and it's another system in which people don't pay attention to. And abusing the rate that goes on in foster care is about as equal to what goes on to illegal immigrants in detention centers. The abuse is pretty much the same. So, if we're not paying attention to what goes on to children in this country, imagine what we're not paying attention to, quote-unquote, illegal immigrants. So, I respectfully like to, you know, ask you all to really withdraw that, and I just want to leave you with this. I'm a poet, and this is why I want to express myself and the voices of many people. "As deep in this society's secrets and bureaucracy and the facts is through the teachings, men are changed, feet are besieged, when the government we love so much is corrupt, we must distrust." Think about that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Maurice. Our next speaker is Owen Broadhurst of thirteen twenty-eight North Hampton Street. Owen, welcome.
Thirty-four years ago last month, two hundred Algerians were slaughtered in Paris. They were massacred. Their bodies flowed downstream on the river Seine and spray painted across bridges overlooking this river. Within Paris was the phrase, "Here we drown Algerians." Why? Because they were viewed by certain populations as illegal. I came here from the town of Agawam, where some eighty years ago, ninety years ago, when Jim Curley was inaugurated as governor, the Ku Klux Klan rallied on Bailey's Field and burned crosses. Why? Because they viewed his kind as illegal. What does an illegal person within this Commonwealth, within this nation, have to face in terms of recourse? Legal recourse when they're themselves the victims of crime? When a child is battered, thrown against the wall, smothered, he's illegal. To whom does he have to turn if the police are going to be turned into agencies that will turn him in, surrender him to ICE, deport him, incarcerate him? Who is going to advocate for that child? When a spouse is beaten, bloodied, raped, burned in her face with an iron, who is she going to turn to to advocate for her when the sole and only legal recourse that she has will arrest her, incarcerate her, deport her, surrender her to ICE? No human being is illegal. No human being is illegal. And if we seriously have a respect for law and order in this society rather than anarchy and chaos, then surely, surely, we will give people who live within this municipality legal recourse to crimes that are committed against them rather than subjecting them to incarceration, deportation, bodies buried in Texas, rape across the border. Let's open the borders. Let's remember that no human being is illegal. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Our next speaker is Jim Brunalt of forty-nine St. James Avenue. Jim?
Thank you, Kevin. I'd have to... I want to start by saying I think there's a distinction that can be drawn and is perhaps necessary to draw between the question of what I would call inalienable human rights and the question or distinction between citizens' rights. They're not the same thing. They're different things. There are, in every nation in the world, rights and privileges afforded to citizens that are not afforded to non-citizens. That's a... It's a standard. It's a given. It's a human constant. I've been told that this is a... And I don't think that problems within a particular system of enforcement are sufficient for us to ignore cooperation with the system of enforcement. I've been told this is a facetious example, and if people take offense at it, I apologize before I give it. I don't think it is. I think it's just an example to try to illustrate my point. There are surveys and studies that show that people who drive red cars get stopped more often for speeding. That's an abuse. It's not right. Does that mean we shouldn't stop anyone for speeding? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. And our last speaker is Teresa Cooper Gordon. Teresa resides at one oh two Linden Street. Teresa, welcome.
I just want to say thank you for having us here, and I want to first say thank you to this community. This is a community that is very united. This is a community that is very determined, and we are here tonight because we love our community, and we know that all of you sitting here love our community and the people that live in our community. We were here last night, and I felt that it was a really good exchange, that people really expressed how they felt. There was history that was shared, and I think that, you know, there was... At the end of it all, there was a vote that was made, and that vote was the vote of unity and determination that we have as a community. We are working very hard as a community to be a model unity, I would say that we could be, and it is time for us to come together, to take an order of that sort off the table and be the unified unity community that we are, the determined community that we are, and to live a healthy life. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, we want to thank everyone for sharing their thoughts with us, and we appreciate all of your thoughtful comments. We'll certainly take that under advisement, and I would recommend perhaps we suspend the rules to take up that item now.
I'm making a decision to take up item number sixteen F.
It seems to be different letters and different agendas.
Yeah.
Did I have a sixteen F?
Sixteen F. Second.
Correct. Yep. Let's see here.
Roll call vote on which agenda item it is?
What's the new agenda?
Sixteen F.
Sixteen J.
I need the new agenda.
It's right here. It's sixteen F on this one. I don't know what it is on this one here.
Brenna, can I get one of those?
All right. Very good. It is sixteen F, councilors, and so is there a motion to suspend the rules to go to sixteen F?
So moved.
Okay. Very good. That's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. Let me read sixteen F, and then we'll get about it here. Item number sixteen F is a report from the Committee on Public Safety to whom was referred an order that the mayor rescind his executive order that directs our police chief to ignore federal immigration laws for detaining illegal aliens. Our mayor should not be directing our police chief to violate the law. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be given. Leave to withdraw. Councilors Leahy, Shattnuff, and Graney. Okay?
Would that be correct?
Well, that's who signed the committee jacket.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Yep.
I must have shown up late then. I didn't sign that jacket.
You're welcome to.
Which is fine.
You're welcome to come over and sign it. Madam Chair, do you have a motion?
Well, I will give a motion to adopt the committee report. I will yield to the maker of the motion for the majority, and I retain my minority report until after the maker for the majority has spoken.
Sure.
Thank you.
Right. I appreciate that.
That was Councilor Bresnahan.
Okay. Very good. So, Councilor Bresnahan, you're welcome to make a presentation on behalf of the majority. The motion on the floor is to adopt the committee report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the committee report, which is to give it leave to withdraw, and as the chair, I normally recognize you first, but you're deferring to Councilor Bresnahan, correct?
I'm yielding to the maker of the motion for the majority, and then I will...
All right. And then we'll have you back in a moment.
Mr. President, point information. Did we receive a copy of the minority report?
No, but I think she's going to give it verbal.
Okay.
Okay. Councilor Bresnahan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chair Person Bacon, for the opportunity to lead off on this charge. I've made a motion to give this leave to withdraw for a couple of reasons. One, the police chief was here last night, as many of you were here and witnesses his... Not his testimony, but his gist of things. I certainly am have different opinions on, you know, why this executive order was sent from a mayor to a law enforcement agent that has been in law enforcement for years. But at the time last night, I obviously took into consideration everyone's thoughts and views, but, you know, the police chief basically indicated that this was not an issue for him. You know, the city of Hoyok faces a lot of issues, a lot of law enforcement issues, and this was not one that the chief was passionate enough about to say that, you know what? This executive order is not a good idea. I have full faith in the chief that if someone does get arrested and their fingerprints are run and they're sent to wherever they go into the internet world, that if something comes back from a federal agency that says, you know what? Something happened in Boston, and this guy snuck into our town, that he will do the right action. God forbid he does not. I mean, again, and when these fingerprints are sent to the federal government, according to the chief of police, the federal agencies, ICE or FBI, will send a recommendation to the Hoyok police chief that says, you know what? Hold this guy for a couple of days. It's not a warrant. It's not a court order. Doesn't have to do it. I would have to assume on that level, if there was a necessity to keep someone off the streets of our streets and our homes and away from our families and away from the Hoyok Ma and away from the Biggie and away from the St. Patrick's Day Parade, that the chief would have the common sense to do what they ask. I don't believe that, you know, I just, with all the issues that we need to deal with, I don't know that this was necessary. This could have been a phone conversation from the mayor to the chief of police. They could have gone back and forth. I mean, you know, we need a balanced budget. We need lower taxes. We need business taxes lower. We need property taxes lower. That's what's facing Hoyok. We need the school systems back in our power. That's really what Hoyok should be facing and we should be fighting for. This is an issue that I don't know where it came out of. I, you know, I started working for the city of Hoyok under Mayor Saskovich, and I worked for Mike Sullivan, the mayor, Elaine Pluta. So, this is the fourth mayor that I have worked with in conjunction with towards a better Hoyok. I just never recall an executive order of this nature. Times certainly have changed. There's no doubt about that. But I just don't believe that, you know, sending an executive order to the chief may have been, you know, the right thing to do. Certainly, on a grandstanding point, it is. I don't believe that anyone is illegal. I believe people have inane human rights to be here. Now, should they come here and should they fill out the same forms that my ancestors did? Because when my ancestors came, it said, "No Irish, no Catholic need apply," both of which I am. Okay? So, I mean, you know, but they went through New York, signed up, got their status and figured things out. Now, times again have changed, and I'm not... This is not eighteen sixty, but I'm just not clear on the purpose of this executive order. Was it really an issue for the city of Hoyok, or was it the opportunity for the mayor to say, you know, "We love everybody," which we all do? And the chief of police, had he presented different testimony about this situation, whether, you know, do we have a lot of illegal immigrants coming into Hoyok? And not to use the word illegal, I apologize. You know, this is all new terminology for many of us, okay? Because I don't believe anybody's illegal. I believe people have a right. They're born... Someone said tonight, "It's one earth. We're all here. We're all human. No matter what color, what religion, what race you are, we all bleed the same blood. We all got one heart, two lungs, two kidneys, and a liver. We're all the same, no matter what race..." My kidney might work for someone that's African-American, and I'm all Irish. I mean, there is a common bond between all human beings, and we need to recognize that. But we also need to recognize there is a very real danger out there. Speak, you know, look at France, just happened. I don't want to go to the movie theater with my family. I don't want to go to the skating rink with my family. I don't want to celebrate St. Patrick's Day Parade and be worried about something that happens. The chief assured me, assured us, that this is not an issue for him. Although he's appointed by the mayor and at the whim of the mayor, he said that this is not something to be of concern with, and that's why I made the motion to give leave to withdraw, even though the testimony from the twenty-year-old people that spoke last night were, you know, obviously very passionate, and I applaud... I applaud everyone tonight that showed up and respectfully spoke, because last night the temperament was a little different, unfortunately. And believe me, when people are passionate about things, that's okay. I'm passionate about a lot of things in my life. I speak very passionately. So, I applaud everyone that came out last night, and again, the same faces I hear, see here tonight, they came out, but they said it in such a respectful, intelligent, meaningful way with the same passion, but with respect, and I applaud that because last night that temperament was not here. And when my turn comes back around, I wish to speak upon that again, but I gave a leave to withdraw because the chief said it's not an issue. Thank you.
Okay. The chair, Council Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify that the issue within the order was about following laws and cooperating with the different various arms of government, and the issue that was with the order was that the police department shall neither honor nor enforce a civil immigration detain or requested by authorized arms of our government. And as we see in our city, we do cooperative raids with our state police on a regular basis to try to make our city safer, and I believe in these instances where these detainers would be requested, they would be for the same purpose. I think it's very unfortunate, and it absolutely was never my intention to in any way be advocating for any sort of profiling, and I quite frankly don't believe that this really addressed that issue at all, ever, but it did become because of the government definitions that are used to define whether somebody is a citizen or not can certainly be found offensive by people. But the definitions that were given by the government are the ones that we live by. So, that was the intention of the order. We are a representative body here. I filed the order on behalf of requests, actually repeated requests, of constituent, and so I would just note that because we are representative, each person on a committee has a vote, and I yield to the wisdom of the body and for the various perspectives that people bring to any vote. But I just wish to be clear as to what my intentions were in filing the order and what the purpose was. I care for nothing more than for the increased safety for every resident of Hoyok. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Council Lisi?
Thank you. I just wanted to go off of what Council Bresnahan said and clarify some of the comments that the police chief said last night. The federal government via ICE may make a request of the police department to detain someone, but by law, they need to release them if they're not going to be under arrest. And that person may be set to the courts for bail, and that information, the request from ICE will go on to the courts, and so it's really a matter for some other body of government to take care of, and really, the chief has been doing this in terms of he is not having his officers ask people when they're taken into custody, whether or not they have legal or undocumented status. And I think that really the mayor's executive order was just codifying the procedures that the police department is already implementing. So, I was really glad to see that the committee voted, just in my opinion, with common sense. It's not something that I think our police chief wants to deal with. It really is going to be facilitating and bolstering trust and communication between the residents of this community and the police department, so I was very much in favor of the motion to give leave to withdraw. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Graney?
Yeah. Mr. President, I was at that meeting last night, and I voted negative for it. I'm listening to what Council Bresnahan said has made a lot of sense, and the reason I objected to this leave to withdraw is because I believe that the mayor should not have the right to tell the police chief or the police department what to do or how to react in certain ways. I believe that should be on the onus of the police chief himself to run the department, and that was the reason. But I can see the passion in this room, and I can understand the feelings of the people, so on and so forth, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Thank you. Council Leahy?
Yeah. Thank you. I was at the meeting as well. It was a great meeting. It was well-attended. We had, I think, over twenty speakers. The speakers did a fantastic job. A lot of different people had told different stories. I shared a story about my family and my father's immigration here. It was a long one, started from Ireland, went to London, went to Boston, Springfield, and then he settled his roots in Hoyok. Kind of sounds like a country western song. But I look around us, and I see the murals on the wall, and I see that everything that is built in the city of Hoyok at this time was done by immigrants. And one of the things I also spoke out about, and I know it's the definition probably in some sort of government book, but as my children, Paige, Caroline, and Brendan are sitting at my parents' house now, I would hate for them to look over at their grandfather and think of him as an alien. He's certainly not ET. He's not an alien. He's a human. He immigrated here from Ireland, and that's something that's kind of troublesome. And that's why, one of the reasons why I didn't agree with this order, or not so much the order itself, but the spirit of the order, because it also says that, it says, "Police chief, ignore federal immigration laws." Well, as the police chief had said last night, he's not ignoring any laws. He's ignoring, or he's not going to ignore, but pretty much a request. What he's going to do is, somebody breaks the law, they will be arrested, and they will go to court the following Monday or whatever date it is, and it will be on the judge or... And it will be on the judge or whoever, you know, sets the bail, to determine what they should do with him. But the Hoyok Police Department, as according to the chief last night, will continue working the streets and making sure that all of us are safe. Quite frankly, you know, another reason too is, you know, I'm all about protocol and Councilor Jordan and I, we talked about local authority, you know, and I also have to give up authority when we don't have it, such as the city council doesn't have a legal authority to order this mayor or any mayor to rescind an executive order. We just don't. Having said all of that, I know there's a lot of people willing and wanting to speak. I just want to leave you with a quote from John F. Kennedy. "We are a nation of immigrants and we're going to continue being." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to be heard? Council Valentin.
Thank you. I was here last night as well and I won't repeat what I said last night, except to thank the folks that came out two nights in a row. You get a special prize. And I'm glad that you're here. So I think one of the things that I wanted to just focus on for a moment is language. And I think that maybe something that we can look at down the road when we kind of look back at this November 17th meeting and the one from last night, is that we've gotten a lot of feedback about how people were really impacted by the language of this order, the use of the word "illegal aliens." And I agree with Council Leahy that, you know, maybe in some government publication it says this is the correct language. But, you know, I think as elected officials, we have to pay attention to language and how we use it and what our intentions are and what our motives are. We can all be guilty of it at any time, but I hope that we can look back and perhaps use this as a learning experience in terms of the power of language and how it impacts our folks here in the city. I also wanted to say that, interestingly enough, today is International Students' Day. And I have the privilege of working at Hoyok Community College where we have a lot of international students and a lot of immigrants. And I just thought it was a great way to look at the fact that we're voting on something like this today. And I do hope that at least eight of us here are voting in favor of this leave to withdraw so that we can put this to the side, take it as a learning experience and look at ways in which we can improve our community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard on this issue? Council Breznerhan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everybody knows how I feel about this order. I just want to briefly talk about a couple of things last night. You know, the word diversity and love came up quite a bit last night. And it's something that is an ideal that I teach my children, I think the world should live by, I agree with it. But we have to realize that, you know, getting, giving people respect when they speak publicly is something that should be acknowledged. Councilor Vacan, amongst all of us, sat there for over an hour and listened to everyone speak. Nobody said anything, nobody laughed, nobody giggled, nobody spoke. We sat there intently and listened to the public speak about their thoughts on this very passionate issue. Nobody coughed, nobody interrupted. We even, the chairperson even allowed someone from out of town speak, a North Hampton resident speak. Didn't say, "Hey, you can't speak, you're not a Hoyok taxpayer, you don't have a right to speak." She let her speak. And then it was time for the chairperson, Council Vacan, to get up and kind of explain things. There was also Mike Franco who got up and disagreed. I mean, diversity is not one group of people believing in one thing. It's allowing people of not only different cultures, different religions, different races and different opinions to live together in harmony. So when this group came down, and many of the same faces come down, it came down, it was almost a mob. And I respect that, you have the right to do that. But when people give you the right to speak your mind about your thoughts, about your life, about your preferences, about how you want to live, how you want to breathe, what you want to believe in, who you want to be with at night, they give you that opportunity to speak and then people that may disagree with you but still love you and still want to be diverse and still want to see Hoyok succeed, don't get that opportunity? That's a problem and that's wrong. You shouldn't, everyone should have a right to speak at the microphone. Someone intentionally was making noises, they were debating with the counselor when she had her right to speak? She has a right to speak. And Ward Five, they're blessed to have a counselor that has the guts to get up. To sit here for over an hour, Linda, and listen to everyone, dirty looks, the way people were looking at her, I thought I had to call the police department. This is not the way Hoyok wants to be, this is not the Hoyok that I was born and brought up should be. You want to talk about diversity? Then accept everybody about their lifestyle, their religion, their opinion. It ain't always, you ain't always going to be the same person with the same opinion all the time. That's diversity, not the same group of people believing the same thing, except me. I'm going to disagree with you, but I'm still going to respect you, I'm still going to love you. So do the same for us. You know how hard it is to take time away from our families and come out like this? And then to have Linda, you know, it was a shame, it was an absolute shame. And I hope I don't, I've never recalled seeing that under any other administration. Alex Morse was here, he should have taken the time to say, "People, you, I mean, everyone last night was with the mayor and that's fine, I respect that." He could have taken the opportunity to say, "Hey, let Linda get her word out." But instead, no, people had a different opinion, people had a different opinion and people got to talk, people, you know, made gestures, people stood up and yelled, people coughed. Nobody did that to anybody else. I mean, let's move forward as a diverse community where we all can get along, even though we have different opinions, even though we have different beliefs. It's possible. That's diversity. Not believing in one thing and hanging around with the same people that are all the same, that's not diversity. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Council Graney.
Just to reiterate what Council Breznerhan said, the first thing you do, you look on what is it, Mass Live in the morning, and you see a headline, "Hoyok counselors hear from residents opposed to racist, inhumane order." Because you have a difference of opinion, does that make you a racist or inhumane? I think that's atrocious. And that's not what this community is all about.
Okay. Anybody else like to be heard on this issue? Hearing none, I would ask that, why don't we go right to a vote on this? Do we want to have a voice vote, roll call vote? What's our opinion here?
It's a simple majority, right?
Simple majority vote. I heard one member asked for a roll call.
Roll call.
Three members having asked for a roll call, clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee recommendation, which is to give the order leave to withdraw, a no vote is to deny. The committee recommendation is to give the order leave to withdraw. A yes vote is to adopt the committee report and therefore give the order leave to withdraw, a no vote is to deny that and which is to not give a leave to withdraw.
I was going first, I want to make sure.
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
No.
Valentin?
Absolutely, yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bertley?
Yes.
Breznerhan?
Yes.
Shatna?
Yes.
Graney?
Oh.
Jordan?
Yes.
Twelve VAs and two NAs?
By your vote, you have given the order leave to withdraw. Counselor McGee?
Yes, can we suspend the rules and take item 27 out of order?
Second. Item number 27. Item number 27 is a Working on Wellness Seed Funding Grant. Counselor McGee makes a motion to suspend the rules to take up this item now. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also moved. Item number 27 is an order introduced by Counselor McGee, ordered that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the city council hereby accepts the provisions of the Working on Wellness Seed Funding Grant and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. Do you have a motion? Or do you want?
Do we vote to take, we're all set?
Yeah, it's now before us.
So make a motion to receive, adopt and pass first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt and to pass its first reading, under discussion. Counselor McGee.
Well, also, because we suspended the rules, would that allow Kara and Julia from the wellness to come up or do another?
Suspend the rules to allow them to speak.
All right, so suspend the rules to allow Kara Cunha and Julia from wellness to speak.
Okay. Julia who?
I just forgot.
Wilkins.
Julia Wilkins, okay. A motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to allow Kara Cunha from the law department, as we know, and also Julia Wilkins from the program itself that's affected, to speak and address the body on this issue. All in favor?
Aye.
Also moved.
And real quickly, what we have before us is a time issue. The grant came in after our last October meeting and then our first November meeting was pushed off because of the election. So they received it before they could file it and get it to us. Now that it's here, they've been told that they have until November 30th in order to act on it or else they lose it. It's a grant for $10,000, which then there's a criteria of things that they have to do for wellness. There is a 50% match, but we already funded that in the budget, we put $20,000 in in the line item, so they only need $5,000 of that. So it's not like we're out of pocket, it's money that's already been allocated. So if we accept this tonight, it's another grant coming in for this program of which, as they'll tell you, all the benchmarks that it's required for, they're going to meet. But they're here to talk a little bit more about it. I received a phone call this afternoon to try and get as much information as possible.
Okay. Is it Kara, do you want to address this? Julia? Where's Julia? Julia, welcome, come on up to the microphone, please.
I'll let Julia address the specifics of it, but I will say, I have reviewed the agreement and everything, you know, seems to be informed as from the legal standpoint, but Julia can address the specifics of the wellness and this grant.
I believe we talked about this at budget time, but could you refresh our memories on this program? Briefly, Julia.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much. Basically, I was encouraged by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to apply for a grant called Working on Wellness for $10,000. And it's actually funded by the same grant that's funding the wellness program right now and my position, which is the Prevention Wellness Trust Fund. Previously, the council approved for this fiscal year, a little over $20,000 for workplace wellness under the Board of Health budget. And so to receive this $10,000, it needs to be matched by at least 50%, as Counselor McGee said, so that'd be $5,000, but the $20,000 that was given counts. So there's no additional funding that I'm asking for. What this grant is for is to help build and sustain evidence-based programs and policies for a wellness program, which include building a wellness committee, action plans, building a budget, marketing, communications and so forth, which a lot of these things we've actually already done in the past year since this program's been around. So it's a lot less work and we'll get $10,000. So the reason I'm here is, as Counselor McGee said, I found out October 22nd that we were getting this funding and was asked to have approval by October 30th. So I got a month extension, therefore needing approval by November 30th.
And is this for municipal employees or the community at large?
This is for municipal employees only.
All right, councilors, you've heard that. Any questions? Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I just want to state, about a year ago, I was asked by Katie Gallagher in the Board of Health to be on this committee. And I have made about two meetings and in touch with Katie and with Ms. Wilkins about what goes on. It's a great program, the wellness is really, in the long run, saving money. If healthier employees stay well and stay healthy, it saves as far as insurance costs for the community and usually insurance agents are there, insurance companies are there at the meetings. And most of the meetings have about probably 12 to 14 people there and most of them department heads in the city. So from what I've seen, it is a great program, it's really helped people to stay fit and stay well and it really drives down costs that the city can incur later on through the health budget.
And Counselor Tomlin's the spokesperson of health and wellness, and look at this guy, he's a specimen, isn't he? He's a poster child.
Veteran.
He's walking the beat.
Uh, anybody else, councilors? All right, very good.
Make a motion to pass the first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Also moved.
Pass the second reading?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the, excuse me, for accepting this grant, mindful of this match, a no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bertley?
Yes.
Breznerhan?
Yes.
Shatna?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have accepted the provisions of that grant, that is item marked, item number 27, on the agenda.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and proceed? Item 14G.
Sure. 14G, please. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up item number 14G. All in favor of that?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Item number 14G is a report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred a flea market application for Mr. David Roman at 642 Summer Street, Hoyok. Have considered the same, recommend that the application be approved under the following conditions. One, signage be provided at the entrance and egress of the flea market property. Two, chalk lines are provided to mark parking spaces. Three, directional arrows are drawn to guide the flow of traffic. Four, business hours are limited to 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. And number five, the flea market license is non-transferable. This has been a motion to be approved by councilors Lisi, Bartley and Shatna, under discussion. Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. Receive the committee report and adopt.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report and adopt, under discussion. Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. So Mr. Roman was here before us for a flea market application at a different location. That went very well, however, he decided to move the location and so the entire special permit process had to start over for this new location. This is at 642 Summer Street. It's a multi-tenant building, but Mr. Roman is looking to operate the flea market on Sundays alone between the hours of 5:00 and 4:00 PM, although we extended the hours from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, seven days a week, so that if he wanted to add an extra day, a Saturday, for example, or Thursday night, he had that flexibility in there and wouldn't have to go through the special permit process again. We made the special permit non-transferable so that it lives and dies with Mr. Roman. There were some questions that we had to hammer out. There were 54 vendor spaces inside the unit that Mr. Roman would be occupying for the flea market. He has about a third of them filled and there were originally 75 spaces in a gravel lot. And while the ordinance requires him to have 67, we were trying to figure out the practicality of having 54 vendors and 75 spaces. If you wanted to, you know, have a successful business, what would the traffic flow have to look like? And we requested, we requested that Mr. Roman get a letter from the property owners stating that the, there's an additional 20 spaces in a back lot that the tenant, Mr. Roman, would have access to for vendor parking. We also wanted to ensure that the entrance egress and flow of traffic in that gravel lot was made very clear. So we created some conditions of the special permit related to signage for the entrance egress. We wanted to make sure that there were chalk lines to designate parking so that you could actually utilize the 75 spaces that could be found on that property. We also wanted to make sure that there were directional arrows to guide the flow of traffic
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and proceed? Item 14G.
Second. Sure. 14G, please. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up item number 14G. All in favor of that?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Item number 14G is a report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred a flea market application for Mr. David Roman at 642 Summer Street, Hoyoke. Have considered the same, recommend that the application be approved under the following conditions. One, signage be provided at the entrance and egress of the flea market property. Two, chalk lines are provided to mark parking spaces. Three, directional arrows are drawn to guide the flow of traffic. Four, business hours are limited to 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. And number five, the flea market license is non-transferable. This has been a motion to be approved by Councilors Leacy, Bartley, and Shatner. Under discussion, Counselor Leacy.
Thank you. Receive the committee report and adopt.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report and adopt. Under discussion, Counselor Leacy.
Thank you. So Mr. Roman was here before us for a flea market application at a different location. That went very well, however, he decided to move the location, and so the entire special permit process had to start over for this new location. This is at 642 Summer Street. It's a multi-tenant building, but Mr. Roman is looking to operate the flea market on Sundays alone between the hours of 5:00 and 4:00 p.m., although we extended the hours from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week, so that if he wanted to add an extra day, a Saturday, for example, or Thursday night, he had that flexibility in there and wouldn't have to go through the special permit process again. We made the special permit non-transferable, so that it lives and dies with Mr. Roman. There were some questions that we had to hammer out. There were 54 vendor spaces inside the unit that Mr. Roman would be occupying for the flea market. He has about a third of them filled, and there were originally 75 spaces in a gravel lot. And while the ordinance requires him to have 67, we were trying to figure out the practicality of having 54 vendors and 75 spaces. If you wanted to, you know, have a successful business, what would the traffic flow have to look like? And we requested, we requested that Mr. Roman get a letter from the property owners stating that the, there's an additional 20 spaces in a backlot that the tenant, Mr. Roman, would have access to for vendor parking. We also wanted to ensure that the entrance, egress, and flow of traffic in that gravel lot was made very clear. So we created some conditions of the special permit related to signage for the entrance egress. We wanted to make sure that there were chalk lines to designate parking, so that you could actually utilize the 75 spaces that could be found on that property. We also wanted to make sure that there were directional arrows to guide the flow of traffic in and out of the space. And while we didn't make it a condition, Mr. Roman and the property owners both said that they're likely to have traffic, traffic help. What do I want to call them? Sorry. Traffic staff. They're hired, hired help to direct the traffic in and out of the parking lot there. We have a lot of confidence that this business will be successful, and so the committee voted unanimously to give this support.
Okay. Counselor Lahey.
Yeah, one of the things that kind of bothers me, but this is, in this case, it doesn't, because the hours are 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. I mean, that's an extensive amount of time. You know, for my, what I think is, let the business owner tell, you know, they should be able to open and close when they want to. I understand we need some guidelines, but they know the business better than we know the business. However, looking at this, this is a, you know, this is a wide spectrum, 5 to 9, so I will vote for this.
Counselor Alexander.
Thanks. Two things. One is just a touch on the 5 to 9 thing for a half sec. The applicant actually is looking to open a Sunday flea market. It's a one-day-a-week flea market. Because of our concern with the traffic of the vendors themselves, as opposed to the customers coming in and out, they offered a plan to have a load-in and load-out day on, I think, Thursday after hours or something. So it added a second day of activity at the site. And then we were looking at maybe conditioning it to, okay, you can be open in the evening on Thursday and the daytime on Sunday, and then we're like, well, what if they want to move their load-in day to Friday? You know, should they have to come back and revise their special permit? That didn't seem to make sense. So this will not by any means be open for that span of time. We're just trying to give them flexibility on where they plug in their window of loading and setup time. Secondly, I just, I want to commend the work of the committee. This was a really interesting application and project, and it was great having both the applicant and his landlord were both very engaged in the process and really willing to do whatever it took to make it work. And one of the things that we took a look at that is sort of unusual is not just the letter of the zoning ordinance in terms of the number of spaces that are legally required by the square footage of the building, but also the practicalities of how much space are you going to need, given the kind of business you're running in that building, and the expected floor traffic, and the expected vendor traffic. And so we actually made sure that they went above and beyond just what was legally required by the, I forget, 20,000 square feet of the building, whatever it is, and provided enough parking for the functional use of the building for the purpose it was intended for. So that, I think, was a great step forward. They met all those requirements as well, or not requirements, but concerns, and came out with a really good project. So I'm fully supportive of this. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else? Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I just want to speak in favor of this and thank the, you know, Dave Roman for coming back again. Thank the Dooley's for getting, having the space available. They're a great local business, Valley Green. It's a section of the community that, in my estimation, having volunteered as much as I have at Morgan School as a big brother, it's really coming around. It's really, that section of Hoyoke is really kind of, in my opinion, turning a page. I think Dave Roman and the Dooley's been there, bringing in more businesses, more people seeing the positive things in that section of town. I think that's going to add, add a lot of benefit to Hoyoke, and they have my full support. And also, I was happy to, happy to pitch in, as I did on the, on the ordinance committee, and I thought everybody in the committee, in particular ordinance, just really worked so hard on a lot of, on a lot of topics. I'm not saying it's the hardest working committee, because we know there's another one that is. But it's a very hard-working committee that does a lot of good things for the city, and the committee members should be, you know, justifiably proud of themselves. Thank you.
Well, luckily, we have a lot of Romans doing good work and work, too. So that's nice. Anybody else? Alright. Oh, Counselor LeBron Martinez.
I just want to say that I've received some feedbacks from some of the residents in the community. They're very excited that a flea market is coming back to Hoyoke. We had one, as you know, where the charter school exists, and it was like an outing for some people at time, I guess, to go out on Sundays and sort of shop there. I also feel that it is bringing our businesses, whatever they consider a business, to come back to Hoyoke and do it here. They could have gone somewhere else. I know Agawon has their own flea market right now. There's other places that are doing flea markets, so thank you for, to Mr. Roman for coming back to Hoyoke. Thank you.
Great. Any other discussion, councilors? Hearing none, the motion on the floor is to, by the committee, is that this be adopted and that this flea market application be granted to Mr. Roman. Hearing no other discussion, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of granting the flea market application to David Roman with the conditions that were articulated earlier at 642 Summer Street. A no vote is to deny it.
Lahey.
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yep.
Shatner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've granted the flea market application for Mr. Roman. Any other requests to move anything on the agenda? Hearing none, we're going back to item number two. Item number two, communications. This first one up comes to us from the mayor. This is, the mayor is seeking to appoint the following individual to serve as a member of the Historic Commission of the City of Hoyoke. Paulo Ferrario, who we heard from earlier. She resides at 27 Morgan Street in Hoyoke. She will be replacing Jerome Easold and will serve the remainder of that term. Said term will expire on April 16th, 2018. Uh, let's see. Do we have the resignation letter? Counselor Resnahan?
If I could, I, I have a committee meeting this Thursday, and on that agenda was to appoint Gerald Easold, Jerome Easold, the same gentleman, to the commission. The letter dated April 16th, 2015. It was tabled on 9/24 due to the applicant not being able to attend that meeting. He's never been a member of the Historical Commission. He's never been appointed, he was appointed but not confirmed by, wasn't even interviewed. He just could not make the meetings because of work schedule on Thursday. And I have a letter from the mayor. It was for this agenda on Thursday. Subject to be approved by hereby appoint the following individual to serve as a member of the Historic Commission for the City of Hoyoke, Jerome Easold, his address and so forth. His three-year term will expire April 16th, 2018. So I'm just a bit confused.
Well, the proper process, Mr. Chairman, is going to be that he needs to withdraw the name Mr. Easold, if it's his desire. We did have a legal opinion, because we actually came up against this about two years ago, regarding that once a name is advanced and nominated, does the mayor have the authority to revoke that nomination prior to our confirmation? And the answer that the Law Department came up with was yes. So the mayor has the authority to do it. He hasn't done it yet. So I would say we can advance this to committee, but we're going to need to have a withdrawal letter on Mr. Easold before we can take action.
This is certainly no reflection upon the applicant now, but I just, I mean, he's on the agenda for this Thursday, so if he's showing up this Thursday to be appointed to the Historical Commission...
Well, either he's going to withdraw, or the mayor has to withdraw him. It's got to be one or the other before Thursday. Because we, we can't take a successor nomination to that one until that one has, because that one came in first. So I would, I would just point that out to the Law Department. Perhaps they can have a conversation with the mayor, okay, as to what they want to do. So we have this nomination, item number two. And a motion on the floor is to receive, refer to public service. The committee will figure out the status there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number three. Item number three comes to us from the city clerk. It's the minutes of our October 20th, 2015 meeting.
Make a motion, accept.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to receive and accept. Any discussion? Counselor McGivern.
These minutes are the clerk's minutes, but not our minutes, because we don't have the discussion with them yet.
Correct. I'll ask our aide, do you have, do you have your portion of the minutes for October 20th yet? Are they in here in the back, or?
Is it just a clerical error on the agenda item? It should refer to both.
No, it doesn't have your discussion stuff. This is just the votes. So this is just your portion? Just Brenna's portion of it? Yeah, mhm. We don't have the narratives. Do you want us to table it, or do you want to pass this portion? Let's see. No, he has the discussions as to what councilors are saying and things, the narrative. Let me see. Well, this was a little bit different than what we've been accustomed to because of Just in the future, I would recommend that the, we've been seeing that it was the administrative assistant had his name here, too, noting here. Otherwise, this looks like this is coming just from you. Alright. Okay, so they're saying that the narratives are in there. So we have both components. So motion on the floor right now is to receive and accept. Counselor McGivern.
With the open meeting law, I don't think this meets the open meeting law challenge of summarizing any discussions that took place at this particular meeting. I mean, we need at least some content of what was said, especially in some of the split votes, but also on the unanimous votes, as to what we said and why we were voting in particular for whichever issue was there.
There, if you do go through different points, Joe, there is, under discussion, some commentary made as to like Counselor so-and-so said X. Like, for example, starting off with the public comment, it's saying Miriam Quinone said blah, blah, blah. Nelson Roman said blah, blah, blah. There was a proclamation here mentioning some commentary that I made. It appears more brief than what we're used to, I, no question.
Very brief.
Yeah.
I don't think it meets the standards for the open meeting law, is the only point I'm making.
We could table it to see if that's all of your, because, I mean, you're writing pretty extensive stuff here. Do you have any more for October 20th? Yeah, maybe we should just table it.
A motion to table.
Yeah. Better safe than sorry. Okay, so a motion on the floor is that it be tabled. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, Ryan, if you could just make sure that the full extent of your commentary is in there for next meeting. Item four. Item number four comes to us from the acting city auditor, Mr. Schmidt. It's the monthly budget reports for the general fund and wastewater treatment plan as of September 30th.
Will be received?
Refer a copy to Finance?
Sure.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to the Finance Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to take up five and six as a package.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to take up items five and six as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Can you read them into the record as well?
Five is quite long. There's all kinds of attachments to it.
Oh, five, that's one hundred and fifty.
I don't think we do it justice to, for me to read. And six?
Can you summarize them into the record?
Yeah, sure, I can. How about if I do a summary? Is that okay? Alright. Okay, so we have, from Counselor Vega, excuse me, State Representative Vega, a letter regarding passing of a special act that would allow the City of Hoyoke to shut off a customer's water when sewer bills go unpaid. And item number six is from Senator Humison regarding a home rule petition for the collection of sewer fees. So Representative Vega states that, "I received your order on October 20th. I want to produce some communications back to September 2013 concerning the state legislature's reservations about passing a special act to shut off customers' water when sewer bills go unpaid." He's stating that the House Counsel's response has been that passing 40N is an option that the city should consider exploring. You will see in these communications that I have relayed this myself, the latest being He states how he's worked very hard to pass several home rule petitions, and he believes that he's working hard to communicate with the city council and make that a top priority.
Real classy.
Okay, he's got some other personal opinions on things.
Oh, that's, that's great, that's on the letterhead.
Which I'm not going to share in a summary. Then he goes on to attach a number of emails. Some of them include myself. Some of them include Rory Casey, which are some time ago.
Is there a conclusion to all of this? Like an actual point that he's making in the end?
Yeah, he, he's saying that you basically shouldn't do that. We should consider going in the direction of adopting 40N. So that's what, that's what Mr. Vega's opinion is. Now, Mr. Senator Humison, on the other hand, states that I'm writing to follow up as a telephone conversation to confirm that I received on October 6th, an order passed by the council regarding the home rule petition issue. It's my understanding that Rep. Vega filed a bill. It's in third reading. Committee staff and House Counsel are working on it. Says he spoke to Rep. Vega. Apparently, there's a difference of opinion between House legal staff and city council as to how best to proceed.
That wasn't, that was different, wasn't it?
Again, goes on to say, "It's not always easy to get bills out of committee, even home rule petitions. Thank you for forwarding the order." If I can assist, Senator Humison. So that was basically his shorter version. Counselor Bartley.
So I make a motion, receive this?
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to receive, both of these, five and six. Any discussion?
One quick comment, if I could. I'm not going to respond to what the honorable state rep said. I will only point out that in the email, now this is from our acting solicitor, or I'm not sure what her title was, in August of 2013, "Dear Rory, hi Rory, also," this is a quote, "I asked Joe if he could research whether any other city or town has adopted similar legislation to 40N." Quote, "As I have been unable to find any." So zero. So nobody's adopted 40N as of this point. So guess what, folks? You can talk about it all you want for 40N, and it may sound good down in Boston as a model, but as I said repeatedly, not here, but I said in other forums, it's a model that should be, if we're going to, if we're going to adopt it, it should be really massaged hard. So that's, that's it, that's just it. So, you know, his editorial comments aside, I'm glad you didn't repeat them, because I didn't agree with them, Mr. President.
None of us do.
But, but I want it known that the acting city solicitor, in August of 13 at least, that's a quote in one of the emails, which I happened to read, that he attached, couldn't find any other community that adopted 40N. Thank you.
Counselor Leacy.
Hi, thank you. I think the way that I read that sentence is that no community has adopted legislation similar to 40N, because we do know that some municipalities, including Springfield, have actually adopted 40N. And so what the complaint is from, from council is, who else has done something like 40N without actually adopting 40N? Because what our home rule petition is requesting is that we have a à la carte menu of options that would effectively do things similar to 40N without using the 40N state statute, per se. And so the way that I understood that sentence is that no other communities have adopted something similar to 40N, which is what we would like to do, and most communities that have adopted something are adopting 40N.
Okay, well, we don't know if Springfield adopted 40N. I mean, their Water Sewer Commission probably predates the adoption of when 40N even became law. But, but my, my other thing is, I did file on the agenda, which is basically the direction the Water Department would like to go in, if this is the direction that we all want the Water Department would like to go in, if this is the direction that we all want to go in, which is the recommendation from their council, which is that we modify the current special act of the Water Department to add on wastewater treatment services.
On the motion to go to committee.
Okay, so that's.
We could talk about this in committee.
Yeah, so that's going to be part of that discussion. The problem that we have is, while we're going through all of that, you know, we have these bills going unpaid, so. But if they're insisting we have to go with the whole enchilada, there's a lot of different ways to do it. Counsel Vacan.
Thank you. I would just note that this correspondence that we received was in response to our objection that we had not received correspondence that had been implied, that we had not responded to. And my reading of this just first-time received correspondence on this issue was that there was no correspondence addressed to the city council until this time. So now it is before us, at least, what the discussions were. So, at least now we're current. Thank you.
Great. Any other thoughts? Counsel McGivern.
In fairness to Senator Humison and Representative Vega, they did appear in the DGR committee in those forums that we have with our state delegation, and this is one of the items that was briefly touched upon. I think they both are working very hard on all the issues that face this community. Forty, I just want to plug in on 40N is, 40N is all or nothing. And we're a very unique community when it comes, especially to our water resources. I don't think I have to preach to the choir here, but not only do we have our own reservoir in Ticonderoke, we have three other reservoirs in the city we don't even use. And before we start talking about 40N, I think we need to address the billing situation. Note that at least all our bills are going to one location now, so maybe it's time that we get to be able to shut off the water when it's a sewer issue as opposed to a water issue. And maybe address that first as we tackle, if we so wish, the humongous issue of 40N.
Well, and the other, the other thing to add on, because everything you said is exactly right, but the other point I would make is, we've had combined billing for greater than 15 years. So, and there's whole discussion about, the issue is, let's combine billing. That's not the issue. The issue is about the shut-off authority when someone is paying only one of the two bills. You know, this seems, I keep seeing this in the thing, and it's like, well, the city council wants to combine the billing. That's already, that horse has left the barn 15 years ago. That's already been done. You'll notice, you get the two in the same envelope. The issue is, people are paying one and not the other, and that's the problem. Counsel Grady.
Just a question through the chair. Do we have the right to shut the water off without the legislature?
Well, I've asked the Law Department to explore that. The reason we wanted to go this direction is that the current law is silent. And to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's, we wanted to put this in so that it's crystal clear that we could. There's nothing that says we can't, but there's nothing that says we can. And I think that was the really thing that gave, I know, the Law Department and many others concern, that we wanted to make it nice and tight.
So hypothetically, we could form Rule 50B, shut off the water and let the chips fall where they may.
I'm not familiar with the rule you just referenced, 50B.
I just made it up, but I mean.
Oh, okay. Oh, great. All right. That's why I'm not familiar with it. Ditto. All right, very good. All right, so, but to Counsel Leahy's point, you know, I have an item on here. I want to forward to you a legal opinion that was recently given to the Water Department, which references a bunch of, one, it's their opinion on 40N, just so you're all aware of that. Two, references other options as to what are non-40N opportunities to combine the departments and what would need to be done. So just, you'll be getting that shortly. Counsel Alexander.
Thanks. Kevin, where are you going to send the order that you've got in there?
I was thinking Finance. And asked the Water Department to come in. I've already asked Dave, I was going to go through some of this in President's Report, but basically, the thing is, I've asked David to really prepare, David Conti.
Water David? Okay, go ahead.
David Conti.
Yeah.
To prepare a, give us language, ask his outside counsel, which happens to be Sullivan Hayes Quinn, by the way, just so we're not, to prepare a draft legislation to their special act that we could do this inside theirs as another alternative.
I just, that's fine. We'll have that discussion in Finance.
Yeah, and we'll see if that's better.
I was going to recommend that these two things get referred to wherever that's going, just so that the discussion can become part of that discussion formally.
Sure. Yeah, we could receive, refer to Finance.
So, receive and refer these to Finance then.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of receiving, referring items five and six to Finance?
Aye.
Aye.
I refer that to the city's listener. I refer that question to the city's listener. I cannot confirm with any data. I am a Joe. Am I that Joe?
A lot of people named Joe.
I take it 50B is dead.
Good one, Counsel. You had me there for a minute. Okay, item number seven comes to us from Attorney Nicholas Cramb. Cramb, I guess. That's the best my pronunciation in it. That is a written protest against the application for a zone change at 161 Lower Westfield Road. Motion on the floor is to receive, refer to ordinance? Any discussion? I believe the committee's seen this before.
I was going to say, I think we received this at the.
The other day?
Yeah. At the public hearing.
All right, just to be safe, we'll send it over to you. Without further discussion, all in favor of receiving, referring to ordinance?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, we're up to eight. Item number eight, item number eight is a communication from Whitman Properties, Inc. It's a letter of interest in purchasing parcel 61-2-14 to join 184 and 186 Beach Street.
DGR, please.
Second.
And this comes to us from Anthony Whitman. Recommendation is to receive it and send it over to the DGR committee. Counsel McGivern?
Copy it to the mayor. It's not copied on the letter unless the mayor got his own communication.
He did get, he got that communication.
Did he?
It's addressed to him.
Yep. Uh, good point. Yeah, it is addressed to dear Mayor Morse. Looks like we're getting the copy.
Sorry.
No problem. It's a small type.
Motion to take up nine to 13.
Okay, so, okay, so first, let's vote on eight. Motion on the floor is to receive, refer to DGNR. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Motion to take up nine to 13 as a package.
Okay, motion submitted and seconded to receive. To take up items nine through 13 as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nine is from the Park and Rec Commission. It's the minutes of May 20th. Item number 10 is from the Board of the Fire Commission. It's the minutes of September 15th. Item number 11 is from the DPW. It's their minutes of October 5th. Item number 12 is the Sewer Commission minutes of October 3rd. And item number 13 is the Stormwater Authority minutes of October 3rd.
Motion to save.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive. All of these, any discussion?
Just, we still haven't received any minutes from a retirement, so I'm just wondering if they're going to come.
Can you get a letter from them, Ryan? Yeah, we may have to file an order to ask them to appear with.
She said they would come. I don't.
Who said they would come?
Ms. Dougreen. So, I mean, she was, she sat right where Howie is in budget hearings and.
That was a while ago.
That was a while ago, though.
You're right, Jimmy.
Are we losing faith in her ability to keep her word on that?
I do have faith, but just a gentle reminder would be great.
Well, Kevin, what's the law for turning the minutes in? Doesn't it have to be? I think what happens is, they do the minutes, they have a meeting.
Yes.
They review the minutes, they pass it in the following month.
I want to say the ordinance, I think, is seven days, but I could, I could be wrong. But I know that we have an ordinance that requires them to give it to us.
Right.
I'll have to refresh my memory as to what the number of days is, but I think there's something in there.
We're going to be retired by the time we get them.
Exactly. Counsel Grady.
Could we request the Law Department to letter them to get the minutes to us?
Yeah, I've asked Ryan to, for next meeting, we need to have some minutes or a reason why no minutes for the next meeting. Okay, Ryan?
Thanks, Tom.
You got that? You made a narrative on that for yourself? All right. So, all in favor of receiving nine through 13?
Aye.
So moved. Ah, the President's Report, our favorite part of the meeting.
You bet.
Coffee.
Certainly don't want to fail you. So, let's see here. First thing out of the box, I wanted to mention to you is a couple, we have a couple greetings and salutations from a number of nice people. First was a letter from Ron Cobb, who lives out in West Hoyoke. He wanted to say, "Please extend my thanks to all the counselors who looked into the people being able to empty our septic tanks into the waste treatment plant. Any help is greatly appreciated." Now, he goes on to say, "He hopes the runoff proposal does not pass. Thank you to all the counselors and keep up your good work." Next up is from the family of Patrick Higgins, our former colleague, who, as you know, passed away back on September 10th and is sorely missed, a wonderful person and wonderful American. Kevin and counselors, we want to thank you for the generous donation to the Soldiers' Home in memory of our dad. The Soldiers' Home is a great asset to its residents and to the city of Hoyoke that Dad cared so much about. And it goes on to say, "The family of Patrick J. Higgins acknowledges with grateful appreciation your kind expression of sympathy, Patsy, Peter, and Michael." That's from Pat Higgins's family. As you know, we made a donation in his honor, both to the Soldiers' Home, and also, we made another donation to Jericho. I wanted to remind counselors that we're going to be having our Christmas party coming up on January 9th. If you haven't responded yet, please do that. Just heard about it. Oh, the email went out. Let's see. Hold on.
Got the email.
Let me see. All right, David, all right. Okay, so, January 9th.
You too.
The other thing.
Can we respond on January 10th?
I wanted to also mention to you that I had the pleasure of representing you along with a number of other counselors that went to the United Veterans of Hoyoke. We had a wonderful Veterans Day ceremony the other day, which was just beautiful. And, you know, we gave our greetings and congratulations to Jesus Pereria, who was named the Veteran of the Year, also to Chief John Pond, our very own fire chief, who received the Public Safety Award, as well as Joan Kavanaugh, who, as you know, is the head of the band at Hoyoke High School, and she won the Citizen of the Year award. So we're really all proud of all three of them. Other than that, I did want to mention to you is, if you could kindly, when you have a moment, send me an email or some other form of communication as to committees that you would be interested in in the next term. I would be very interested to know and begin to give that some thought over the holiday season. So if each of you could take a moment to do that, I would appreciate that. I did also want to say that we're going to be having an orientation for the new members in early December, and if any counselors want to come and participate, you know, in that just as a refresher and whatnot, or if anybody needs ordinance books or updates or anything like that to your books, let me know, so we can get you that type of stuff. An updated rule book, any, just any of that type of housekeeping things, let me know. So, I, because I am going to be getting some things for the new counselors, and if you, any of you need that, just please let me know. So, Counsel Leahy.
I just got three quick things. One, the first one, this Saturday, there's going to be a ribbon cutting down at the Hoyoke Children's Museum. My wife, who's the president of the museum, wanted to make me share, made sure that I announced this. There's a new exhibit that costs $250,000, and it's going to be open Saturday, and they're very excited about it. So it's a $250,000 investment in the downtown that the Hoyoke Children's Museum raised on their own this past year. The second thing, the same day, at the Children's Museum, myself and my family are having a coat, a mitten, and a hat, and a tie, a necktie drive. So if anybody has any coats, mittens, or hats, or ties, please bring them down. The ribbon cutting for the city council and for the mayor, for the state reps is going to be at 10 o'clock. Feel free to bring your kids. And the coat and mitten drive will be at the same time, 10 to 3. And the last thing is, it brings me with great pleasure as being the vice chair of the Westwood State Foundation, that Hoyoke's own Catherine Dower Gold, who's a friend probably to all of us, just got, just got released about an hour ago. She donated $1 million to the music department at Westwood State, and that is the largest donation that our university has received, so we're excited about that. Thank you.
Yes. Longtime professor at HCC, and I had the pleasure of receiving an award the same day as her for, you know, certainly nowhere near her contributions. I was only a trustee at HCC. She was a long and illustrious career. She's a genius, you know, and a PhD in music and the whole nine. She's quite a woman. And a Hoyoke native. Anything else, counselors? Any other announcements we want to make? All right, so that sums up the President's Report for this evening. And again, I want to extend my congratulations to everybody on a great election, and thank everybody for coming out to vote, citizen-wise. I did also, did get, I'll just put this out there, a few calls. If anybody has lawn signs and things, I was asked to mention it, so I will, that are still out there, if folks and candidates could make it a point to pick those up and get those, get those out of there, people would appreciate those. So, I was asked to remind folks about that.
Especially those big red ones.
Those are all picked up, because I know how much they cost.
Yeah.
And, very good. So, all right. We move forward. Reports of committees. Item number 14, 14A. 14A is a report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom is referred an ordinance amendment. It's the 127th Amendment to Appendix A of the Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Hoyoke of 1997. Have considered the same and find that it is properly enrolled and to be adopted. Counselors Lisi, Alexander, Bartley, and Shatnov.
They didn't give you any language, or, I mean.
Yeah, there is an amendment afterwards. Does that go with this? Is this a compendium to this? Okay, these are supposed to be combined, Ryan. Let's see. This, okay, further reads, it was, "To whom is referred a zoning ordinance, section 7.8.4, special permit application wireless telecommunications facility be amended to include a provision that space be provided for public safety uses at no cost to the city when new antennas, materials, or modifications are installed. Have considered the same, recommend that this order, as I just read to you, be adopted." Counselors Lisi, Alexander, Bartley, and Shatnov.
Be received and pass the first reading, please.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel Lisi.
Thank you. So this order, I filed on behalf of Chief Pond, the fire chief. Basically, there's been like an implicit agreement that when new antennas go up, the Public Safety Arms, DPW, Police and Fire have been able to put equipment up on these wireless communication facilities. But there has been an instance in which the tower or facility is sold to a new owner, and when they want, when Police or Fire wants access to that tower, they don't have to give them that permission to utilize the tower and the space there. And so this would just codify our ability for Public Safety Arms of the city to put equipment, radio equipment, transmitter, transmission equipment up on there at no cost, to the extent possible. So it really gives, you know, some flexibility in there, but it implies that we will be able to do this at no cost.
Anybody else? All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Okay, motion submitted and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Okay, motion submitted and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan? Shatnov?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thirteen yays.
By your vote, you have approved that ordinance change. Item number 14B. Item number 14B comes to us from the Committee on Ordinance to whom is referred an order that the city council, through the ordinance committee, allow changes to provide three to four parking signs in front of Lawrence School on Cabot Street that will say "No Parking" from 8:00 a.m. to 9:30, and 2:30 to 3:30. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted as amended. Order that the city council, through the ordinance committee, allow changes to provide three to four parking signs in front of Lawrence School on Cabot Street that will say "Student Drop Off and Pickup Only." This is approved by Counselors Lisi, Alexander, Bartley, and Shatnov.
Thank you. Be received, adopted, and pass the first reading, please.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel Lisi.
Thank you. This order is filed by Counsel LeBron Martinez, related to a lot of the traffic issues and safety issues for children being dropped off in front of the Lawrence School. There was just a lot of congestion and backup. It was creating problems for children crossing the street and cars passing by, and so what we decided to do is create a student drop-off and pickup zone only so that parents could get in, drop their children off, get them to the school safely, and then move out of the way quickly so that other cars and buses, pedestrians can file through that area more safely. If Counsel LeBron Martinez has anything to add, I welcome it.
I just want to, again, thank the committee for working this through. It was very well explained by Counsel Lisi, so just, you know, favoring this and hoping that we can pass this tonight. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Okay, motion submitted and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Be ordained.
Sorry.
No problem.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to the passage be ordained. There is no further debate. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of making this ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan? Shatnov?
Yes.
that the businesses have a legitimate grievance in the way that this is structured. So, they'd Lisi? like us to revisit it with a more open dialogue.
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
All right. So, without any further discussion on that point, if not, all in favor referring
McGivern?
Yes.
back to ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item 14E. Item 14E is an order introduced, excuse me, is a committee report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom is referred an order that no parking shall be allowed on either the east side, excuse me, either side of Dwight Street, east of Main, as part of the Hoyok Rail Platform vehicular loop. Have considered the same and recommend that the order be adopted. Councilors Lisi, Alexander, Bartley, and Shatnov.
Thank you. Receive and pass the first reading, please.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Councilor Lisi.
Thank you. This was filed by Council Bartley. It's really looking to make sure that as we open up the rail service to the Dwight Street platform, that we have a way for vehicles to come in, to drop off and pick up, and keep the traffic moving. So, we recommend this for adoption. If Council Bartley wants to add anything, he may.
Okay. Council Bartley is suggesting that the Chair has added enough commentary, but Council Alexander feels more...
I have commentary now. Three seconds worth of commentary. Just to remind everyone, East of Main Street is the little stub of Dwight Street that doesn't go anywhere. It's part of the turnaround loop in the design of the rail platform. It's, there's nothing on it except the rail platform.
Okay, great. All right. Without further ado, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatnov?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Twelve yays.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change. Item number 14D is a report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom is referred an order that no parking shall be allowed on the west side of Ray Street, abutting the Canal Walk from Dwight on the north to Appleton on the south. Have considered the same, recommend that this order be adopted. Councilors Alexander, Bartley, and Shatnov.
Motion to send this back to committee?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to refer back to committee. Under discussion?
Yeah, very briefly. So, we took this up, and it was understood that according to some of the Canal Walk provisions that we agreed to, and the streetscaping grant money that we received from DOT, that we had to limit parking in this way on Ray Street. But, the city engineer and Marcos Marrero, Director of Planning and Economic Development, feel that the businesses have a legitimate grievance in the way that this is structured. So, they'd like us to revisit it with a more open dialogue.
All right. So, without any further discussion on that point, if not, all in favor referring back to ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item 14E. Item 14E is an order introduced, excuse me, is a committee report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom is referred an order that no parking shall be allowed on either the east side, excuse me, either side of Dwight Street, east of Main, as part of the Hoyok Rail Platform vehicular loop. Have considered the same and recommend that the order be adopted. Councilors Lisi, Alexander, Bartley, and Shatnov.
Thank you. Receive and pass the first reading, please.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Councilor Lisi.
Thank you. This was filed by Council Bartley. It's really looking to make sure that as we open up the rail service to the Dwight Street platform, that we have a way for vehicles to come in, to drop off and pick up, and keep the traffic moving. So, we recommend this for adoption. If Council Bartley wants to add anything, he may.
Okay. Council Bartley is suggesting that the Chair has added enough commentary, but Council Alexander feels more...
I have commentary now. Three seconds worth of commentary. Just to remind everyone, East of Main Street is the little stub of Dwight Street that doesn't go anywhere. It's part of the turnaround loop in the design of the rail platform. It's, there's nothing on it except the rail platform.
Okay, great. All right. Without further ado, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Twelve yays.
By your vote, you have approved the ordinance change. Item 14F is a report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom is referred an order that a stop sign be installed at Ashley Road and Route 202. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Councilors Lisi, Alexander, Bartley, and Shatnov.
Thank you. Receive the committee report and pass the first reading.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report, to adopt it, and to pass its first reading. Under discussion, Councilor Lisi.
Thank you. I believe Council Bacon filed this order?
This was filed in response to recommendation by the Police Department when there was just a request to look at traffic flow and slowing traffic in the area. Thank you.
So, I assume you're in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Council Grainey?
Absolutely necessary. This is a, this is a very dangerous place, so...
Okay, great. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Council Bacon.
I would just note that this is just one piece of the traffic issues being addressed up there, the other being 202 with the left-hand turn and those issues there. For the folks that might be watching, they're very frustrated up there. But, we have to have our engineer look it over. Thank you.
And he is, based on our last meeting.
Right.
Oh, super. Okay, great.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else? All in favor of passing the second reading?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report and approving this ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Twelve yays.
By your vote, you have approved the ordinance change. As you know, we already took care of 14G, which now brings us to 14H. 14H being a report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom is referred a special permit application for a zone change to be located at 161 Lower Westfield Road from the current zone IG to the proposed zone IP for Mr. Emil Schlegel. Have considered the same, recommend that the application be given leave to withdraw. Councilors Lisi, Alexander, Bartley, and Shatnov.
Thank you. Receive the committee report and adopt.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report and adopt. Under discussion, Councilor Lisi.
Thank you. So, 161 Lower Westfield Road is the former Atlas Copco property. The residents have petitioned in the past to change the current zone from IG to IP. The previous petition was denied in 2014, in March of 2014, and as a result of the denial by both the City Council and the recommendation for denial by the Planning Board, the residents cannot petition for a zone change of the same zone, from, from one zone to the same zone that they petitioned in the past, until March of 2016. So, this petition was improperly before us, just kind of slipped through the cracks. And, as a result, we, we just gave it leave to withdraw with the residents present. We did go through the process of advertising and opening the, the public hearing, just to say that this was improperly before us. We did, at that time, also receive the letter from Nicholas Cram that was written protest about the application for a zone change. And so, we're just looking to give it leave to withdraw this time, and the residents will be waiting until March of next year.
Very good. Council Bacon?
Thank you. I would note that there was some confusion because there were, there was a legal opinion rendered about a zone freeze relative to the plan, and that opinion referenced a February date. And so, I think it led to some confusion. So, I'm hoping that perhaps the clerk's office could waive another filing fee, given that there was a technical confusion around the filing issue.
We'll leave that up to the good judgment of the city clerk, but perhaps we can discuss that at a future time if it becomes an issue. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we're going to take a roll call vote on this. Vote is going to be on adopting the committee report and giving leave to withdraw. A yes vote is to do that, a no vote is not to do that.
Yep.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Twelve yays.
By your vote, you have given that zone petition a leave to withdraw. We do not have any Finance Committee reports for this particular meeting, which now leads us to the Public Safety Committee reports. First up is 16A. The Committee on Public Safety to whom is referred an order that a representative from the Hoyok Police Department come into the Public Safety Committee to discuss rules and regulations and laws regarding motor scooters and their use in the city of Hoyok. Have considered the same and recommend that the order has been complied with. Councilors Bacon, Leahy, Shatnov, and Grainey.
A motion to receive and adopt the committee report?
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report and to adopt. Under discussion, Council Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order was filed by Council Greeney, and the Chief and Sergeant Loftus came in and gave us a good overview and provided us each with a packet of the applicable laws. And generally, what we learned is that state law dictates how we approach this whole matter. But, I'll defer to Council Greeney, the maker of the order.
Yeah, we were pretty much satisfied with the, we were pretty much satisfied with the report of the, of the Chief of Police, that they are, they do monitor it, they do follow. But, to ensure public safety, they, they will not chase at all times. But, if they see a violation, they, they generally get the license plate number, or they do follow up on it. So, I think they do a good job with it.
Council Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. It was a good review. This was an order that I had filed maybe six or seven years ago, back when they were selling these Pocket Rockets at every corner store for $99. And, you know, we brought, it was then Chief Scott. He came in, and he was just talking about how any, any of these motorcycles that are under 50 cc's, they're, they're illegal. They don't have mirrors on them. They don't have a sticker. Certainly, there's no insurance on them. You could purchase them for $99. But luckily, I don't think we have the problem as, as well as, or as we did once before. But, it was a good meeting. Thank you for filing that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the committee report?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Can we suspend necessary rules and take up 16B and C as a package, please?
Sure. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules, to take up items 16B and 16C as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number 16B is a report from the Committee on Public Safety to whom is referred an order that the City Council be updated as to how many properties have been placed into receivership through the Housing Court, and an update from our Legal Department as to how this can decrease blighted properties. It has been reported that Springfield, reported that Springfield uses this tool to prevent the deterioration of properties with good results. Have considered the same, recommend that that order has been complied with. Item number 16C references an order that the City Law Department and any other city departments come before the City Council to update the body on any current properties in receivership, and if any intentions or efforts are being taken by the city to have blighted or abandoned properties placed in the receivership, and to see what efforts are being made to keep the blighted property safe. Have considered the same and recommend that that be considered complied with. This comes to us recommended by Bacon, Leahy, Shatnov, and Grainey.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report?
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the recommendation on both of these two committee reports. Under discussion, Council Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. These orders were filed by me and Council Bresnahan. He's not in the chambers right now. So, I will just summarize that we did receive a written update from Caracunia, and right now, completed, we had four receiverships, and that we're in the progress of identifying and adding an additional four. While there was some disappointment expressed that the numbers are so few, we are optimistic that with the funding that has been approved through the CDBG funds, adding an inspector, that we will be able to make this program larger and move the properties more rapidly to help to improve these blighted properties. If anybody wants to add anything, please jump in.
I certainly have my list of recommended properties to be put in there. Good, very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting both committee reports?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number 16D is a report from the Committee on Public Safety to whom is referred an order that the City Council explore the potential of alternate side or one-side parking on Brookline Avenue during the winter months. Residents are raising concerns about emergency vehicles, access after snow plowing. Have considered the same, recommend that this order has been complied with. Councilors Bacon, Leahy, Shatnov, and Grainey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommend to receive and adopt the committee report?
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt this. Under discussion, Council Bacon.
This order was filed by Council Shatnov, and our new engineer, Yem Lip, came in, and
What side do you pick? What if someone doesn't have a driveway? So it's just better to have the DBW enforce it and hopefully clear the road as much as they possibly can.
Yeah, we may have to revisit, you know, as it goes. But Council Greeney?
Yeah, that, that problem isn't unique to Brookline Avenue either. From Woods Avenue right over to Cherry, all those streets are very narrow. So what would apply to Brookline really would apply to all the rest of the streets.
And I would just add that our engineer will take a look and consider the notion of the temporary signage that has been used on a couple of streets during heavy storm, where it's just a stake actually in the snow that says parking banned until such and such a time.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Tomlin.
Got your work cut out for you now, huh, Kevin?
Oh, yeah.
No, I think we all received a call by some constituents.
Council McGee said it was gonna be easy, so.
Yeah, some constituents and I spoke to somebody about it the other day and they said, one of the things that people gotta look at, and I know it's difficult for them to do that, is to park in their driveways during the snowstorms. But then they're worried about getting plowed in and have to shovel out or not getting out. So if people could do that, that might be somewhat helpful. But still, with the storm we had, with the winter we had last year, was just amazing amount of snow we had. So sometimes that's gonna happen where it's gonna be difficult. But I, I think we have to look at not just that street, but a lot of those streets right in that corridor that are very narrow. And sometimes people, they used to have one car, now have three cars. And it's difficult to put all the cars in the driveway and how are you gonna get out if they're, they're plowed in? So it's just something that I think the residents are gonna have to sort of work with, you know, the city and, and trying to, to keep that, that street as clear as possible.
Council Leahy?
Yeah, just very briefly, that this street and many others in the neighborhood are two and three family houses, so they have multiple cars. You know, some houses, you know, they have, you know, husband, wife, child. They can have three, three, uh, three automobiles for, per apartment. So that's what it comes down to. There's just a lot of cars. It's a great neighborhood, but it does get tight during the, during the winter.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the committee report?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Sixteen E. Sixteen E is a report from the Committee on Public Safety, to whom was referred an order that the mayor and fire chief come before the Public Safety Committee to discuss the brownout of both Engine Two and Tac Two. Please come prepared to discuss potential options for putting this apparatus back online. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be given leave to withdraw. Councilors Bacon, Shatnov, and Greeney. As was Leahy.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report and to adopt. Under discussion, Council Bacon.
Basically, it was made known to us that these engines are online at this time. And I will defer to the maker of the order, Councilor Leahy, to elaborate if he wishes.
Yeah, thank you. I filed this order some time ago. The reason I'd file it is because we had passed the budget and we didn't cut any money from the fire department. But yet, it was still out there that it was the city council that was responsible for these brownouts. And I was hearing that left and right, so I figured, hey, if that's what they're thinking, let's bring everybody in here and, and say it's not the city council. We did not cut the budget. And so thankfully, all the apparatuses are back on and we're not having these brownouts any longer. Thank you.
And of course, you're absolutely a hundred percent right. And the other piece of it is that we have four hundred thousand in overtime that was budgeted, and that is almost gone. So now, what's the game plan? So, I don't, Mr. Chairman, do we have a report on free cash yet? So it's, we, free cash, it's now November seventeenth. We're about two months behind when we normally have free cash certified. We have the well-running dry on a lot of these overtime accounts. We have a budget that needs to be balanced. We have
I know.
We have, we have, you'll see a communication shortly about, I was gonna save this for later, but we have a request from the assessors to begin setting a date to set the tax rates and to have classification hearings. But we don't have a balanced budget yet. Council McGivern?
We won't be having brownouts, we're gonna be having blackouts. Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so all in favor of adopting this committee report?
Aye.
Aye.
Sixteen F, we already took care of. We have no public service committee reports for this particular meeting. We're now off to the Development and Government Relations Committee reports, beginning with eighteen A. The Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred an order that the city council approved, a certified project and tax incremental financing agreement for International Container Company, Seerless Associates LLC, for its expansion at one twenty-two Moser Street. Have considered the same, recommend that it be adopted. Councilors Bartley, McGivern, Alexander, LeBron Martinez, and Valentin.
Motion to adopt, receive, adopt the committee report and to approve a resolution of the city council approving the certified project for the applicant.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and to approve the tax incremental financing agreement for this particular company. Under discussion, Council Bartley.
So we, we approved this three-nothing at committee. The, the company is a, a family-owned business. They, the company's operations are on Moser Street. They cover about ten acres of land. Their company's grown to, you know, a lot of jobs down there. They, the, the application says that they're gonna create five full-time equivalents. The cost to the city estimated is between thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars in lost revenue over the course of the TIF, which is a five-year period. And that's it. So the committee, the committee heard from them and, and we're, we're in support of it. Thank you.
Council McGivern?
I think this is one of those success stories that we're all very proud to, to stand behind. And the TIF is something that I, I think many of us believe in, but I think the TIF is the opportunity that gives the, in this case, a, a current business, the ability to invest money into expanding the business, the ability to protect the jobs, which are, to protect, protection of jobs is forty-five. And as Council Bartley said, and at least an addition of five, although they're optimistic it's gonna be more than five. The key numbers to me is, is the investment. It's a million dollars. Five hundred thousand dollars in new, new building costs and five hundred thousand dollars in, in new, new equipment, which are, which are both taxable, as we know. The, the TIF only is, is placed on the new, the, the, I'm sorry, the new cost, the new, new investments, not on the existing building itself. And it gives the opportunity over a five-year period to allow the investors to take their money, put it into the building, which in the long run means we get more taxes for a longer period of time.
Council Valentin?
Thank you. I would hope that we can all vote in favor of this. They did a great presentation. I was actually really impressed with the fact that they have been growing in terms of number of employees quite a bit. And they talked about how by early twenty sixteen, they're already looking at reaching about fifty employees and ten to fifteen evening shift folks, which is something new that they're trying. They also talked about the, the idea of involving Dean Tech students as possible in terms of their welding projects. And I thought that was also something that was very encouraging. So it was really a great opportunity to hear from a business that wants to stay here, wants to grow, and wants to really connect with, with the community and, and keep these new positions going in Hoyoke as well, because they did talk about prioritizing Hoyoke folks. So just wanted to share that, because it was very commendable when they were doing their presentation, that they were very specific about this. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Council Green?
Yeah, this is exactly the type of thing that Hoyoke needs.
Any other discussion? Council LeBron Martinez?
Yes, unfortunately, I was not here, but I commend this opportunity and I'm hoping that we actually vote in favor. Thank you.
Anybody else? Vote will now be on adoption. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report and granting the tax incremental financing agreement and certifying it with your approval. A no vote is to deny that.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi? McGee? McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Shatnov?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
By your vote, you have approved the tax incremental financing agreement for International Container Company, Seerless Associates LLC. Item number eighteen B is a report from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred an order that the city council, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-B, and the Hoyoke Procurement Ordinance, vote to accept an offer from the Hoyoke Health Center to purchase a parcel of land and a building located at two forty-five High Street for five thousand dollars. Said property is described by the Hoyoke Assessor's records as map twelve, block three, parcel two, containing approximately eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-two square foot buildings situated on approximately two thousand two hundred and sixty-five square feet of land. The property is more proper, particularly described in deeds recorded in the Hampden County Registry of Deeds, located at book one seven three five four, page four fifty-nine. The parcel is zoned downtown business, B.C. zoned, and has an assessed value of one hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Councilors Bartley, McGivern, Alexander, LeBron Martinez, and Valentin.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and to approve the sale for five thousand dollars to the Hoyoke Health Center. Under discussion, Council Bartley.
So we had the CEO of the health center in, before us. He, we approved the three-nothing at committee. We, we, we spoke about the, I mean, it's right across the street from City Hall. The, the, the technical application that Jay, Jay Brynes is the CEO, he didn't go into exact specifics, because there really isn't a, he has aspirations to have possibly a telemetry services there. But, but he's, he's hopeful that, that with the building, if, if we approve the transfer, he'll be able to offer some conference space, some office space, possibly some retail space on the main, on the main floor. The, the back taxes that this transfer results in will not be repaid and that the sum total loss to the city is sixty-three thousand dollars. The, the health center will pay a pilot, which is half the commercial rate on the nonprofit portion of the property. So if there's a, he's got a couple of businesses that he rents to that are for-profit. In those parts of the buildings, they pay the full commercial rate. And the parts, the other parts of the building where it's not-for-profit, he is paying half the commercial rate. Jay, Jay spoke about economic impact and the number of employees that, that, that health center's brought to downtown Hoyoke, which is, you know, fairly significant, over five hundred. There is a reverter clause which, which is, which was sent to me yesterday. I, it wasn't available at the committee, but there is a reverter clause on this. If, if the, if the city feels as though the health center is not performing in accord with this technical proposal, there, there are a few triggers after six months, one year, and two years. And I can answer any other questions from anyone else. Thank you.
Council Alexander?
Actually, Council Greeney's hand was up first. He was, he was over here with it up when he moved.
Is that the building, is that in proximity to the surgical supply, Council Bartley?
It's, it's next door, Howie.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Council Alexander?
Thanks, sorry. If I recall, I, I looked at this when it first came up and I was like, oh, five grand for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar building. But if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, Council Bartley, one of the issues is there's no way to bring the building under consideration here up to code in terms of access to the upper floors. And the proposal is to actually blow through between the two buildings, utilize the elevators in the health center to provide multi-level access in the small building. And that was part of why it assesses higher than it's really worth, was my understanding.
I, I really can't answer the, the assessment part. I can't say that there are, it is a five-story building, that the upper two floors, fourth and fifth floor are not accessible via elevator, and that that building at two forty-five High Street, to which we're concerned, does connect, shares a common wall with property owned by the Hoyoke Health Center.
Council McGivern?
Currently, we're getting zero dollars, because we own the building. It's sitting there, it's been sitting there for some time. The, the plan at the health center is to invest about a quarter million dollars into both, as, as pointed out by both councilors, on some investment in terms of connecting the buildings and utilizing it. And in the long run, we're, we're helping out in, in a downtown mostly not-for-profit or, or as, as pointed out, some for-profit companies within it, but an employer that brings some five hundred people downtown. The building will be better off in the long run. If necessary, once the investment is made, it now becomes part of a, of a building that can be used for a lot more than currently, can be used for nothing on those upper floors.
Council Leahy?
And also, let's be reminded of the fact that they don't pay taxes for a nonprofit. However, any for-profits that are utilizing any part of the building will pay taxes. So they will give the city, they'll be back in the tax roll.
Council Lisi?
And in this case, the health center agreed to a pilot, so they'd be paying half of the commercial rate in those nonprofit spaces.
Council Tomlin?
Yeah, Chairman Bartley, just a quick question. This, was this put out to bid or was just an offer that they made?
Put out to bid.
Was put out to bid, okay. Is, is not a minimum or whatever, whatever the value's worth, or?
Twenty-five thousand. It was, it was RFP.
RFP, RFP. Okay, and they're the only one that bid?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I, I think it's, it's great that anytime you have a business downtown that's willing to take over a building and to, to help a business that, a business that is already down here to, to really bring some, you know, new life to the building that's just sitting there and bring in some tax dollars. Anything will help our, our city and our, our growth of our city downtown.
Very good. Without further ado, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report and to approve the sale. A no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Shatnov?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
By your vote, you've approved the sale of two forty-five High Street to the Hoyoke Health Center for five thousand dollars. Eighteen C is a report from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred a special permit application for a non-conforming use to be located at ten sixty-five Hampden Street from Mr. Robert Everett. Have considered the same, recommend that the special permit be approved. Councilors Bartley, McGivern, Alexander, LeBron Martinez, and Valentin.
Motion to adopt the committee, receive, adopt the committee report and grant a special permit.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report, to adopt it, and to grant the special permit to Mr. Everett. Under discussion, Council Bartley.
So, you know, Ryan did a good job, sent out notice. We, we got everybody, all the butters and all that notified. The only persons come down were the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Robert Everett of ten sixty-five Hampden. Basically, there's a garage back there. It is an existing non-conforming use. It actually encroaches upon the neighbor's property. Mr. and Mrs. Everett proposed, and it's, it's an eighty-year-old garage that is not really made for the, the modern, modern vehicle. I might have made a comment that night that maybe suggesting they get a smaller vehicle and they can get in and out of their car, but they, they didn't particularly wanna hear that one. I was just joking, actually. But, but they're gonna build a larger, more, a modern garage. The neighbors are good to go with it. It's gonna enhance the, the neighborhood. And so we didn't, I, I know I did receive feedback kinda late from the building commissioner, and he is okay with, with everything, even though I got, he sent a letter. Apparently, I, I never received it, Mr. President, in a timely fashion for the committee hearing. And I don't know what, what happened. The letter, I think he's, it was dated October first, if I remember. It's not in that jacket. And so he, he emailed me tonight. I shipped it out to the committee members during the meeting. But, but basically, the, the letter said that he was okay with, with all of it. And we, at committee time, subcommittee time, approved the special permit application. I'll answer any other questions.
You can just include, get this out, letter. We'll include it in the packet for the final record.
I will forward that to Ryan.
Please. Any other discussion, councilors, on this item regarding the garage? Council Tomlin?
Yeah, I just wanna state, I'm very much in favor of this. I know the family for a number of years, grew up on that street. And I was served in the, in the service over at Barnes with Mr. Everett and their fine family and upstanding citizens and what they're doing as just enhancing their, their garages, as Council Bartley stated.
And I will note, all taxes and municipal charges are current, too. So we're that. Any other discussion? Hearing, oh, Council McGivern?
Just note, we had some technical support this time and it was, the planning director was there. And, and I think Council Bartley pointed out all the, the important parts of the, of the, of this type of vote. The, the non-conforming is, the only reason the garage, the garage was in the setbacks is because there were no setbacks when the garage was built. So therefore, it's non-conforming. But as David said, you know, I think the whole neighborhood's better off and the property is if a new garage is built on the same spot.
Without further discussion, clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report and granting this special permit for Mr. Everett. A no vote is to deny it.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Shatnov?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
By your vote, you have approved the special permit for Mr. Everett. Next up is item eighteen D. This is a report from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred an order that the city council, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-B, and the Hoyoke Procurement Ordinance, vote to accept an offer from United Innovations, Inc., doing business as specialty loose leaf to purchase a parcel of land and a building located at one Cabot Street for ten thousand dollars. a building located at 1 Cabot Street for $10,000. Said property is described by the Hoyoke Assessor's records as Map 48, Block 1, Parcel 10, containing approximately 2.289 acres, with a building approximately 200,000 square feet in size. The property is more particularly described in Hampton County Registry of Deeds Book 19236, page 490. The property is owned General Industry IG, and has an assessed value of $440,600. Half consider the same, recommend that the order be denied. Councilors Bartley, McGivern, Alexander, Lebron Martinez, and Valentin.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and deny the application.
Okay, motion has been made in second to receive the committee report, to approve its recommendation that the item be denied, this sale offer. Under discussion, Council Bartley.
So, in this case, the property's at 1 Cabot Street. Just to orient the public, it's a former national blank. It's across, it's as if you cross from the Willimansett Bridge, the brand-new Willimansett Bridge, and it's a big, old building, about 200,000 square feet on the right-hand side as you cross over from Willimansett. And so, United was the sole respondent to an RFP offer under 30B. The offer was for $10,000, and appearing before the committee was a corporate vice president, and he did, you know, he did a good job in his presentation. The committee voted, however, 3-0 to reject the offer. So, I'm just going to go through a couple, a couple of quick details, and then I'll just give you my reason why I voted to reject it. So, the current assessment on the property is $440,600. The back taxes and G and E charges total $440,000. Additionally, Hedic gave a loan that has gone unpaid to Specialty Loose Leaf for $145,000. The, you know, there was a reverter clause on there, but, you know, to me, in the technical application, the, Mr., you know, the corporate vice president, he went through, you know, what's wrong with the building? Heating system is awful, the roof is leaking badly, the windows are deteriorating, it's a 123-year-old building, and here was the kicker, quote, "We do not have immediate plans to make major improvements," unquote. So, in other words, we'll take the building for $10,000. We're not going to pay any back taxes. We'll handle the assessment going forward now, but there is a reverter on there, and so, we can walk away from this. You know, really, Mr. President, there really isn't any downside to the applicant. I don't think there's much upside, frankly, to the city of Hoyoke. It's my hope that we will adopt the committee report tonight, reject the offer, and that the mayor and Oped, who, by the way, I forgot to compliment them, because they, you know, John and Marcos did a great job helping us through it all that last Monday, as they always do. But the proposal's not up to snuff. So, it's a hope that they'll put it back out to RFP, or find some other way to attract bidders, or going to provide a technical proposal to say that they'll do something with the building. Make it real, okay? We know it's wrong with it, and he pointed all that out, but we need to, and it's great that we have a reverter clause, but you have a reverter clause, you say you're not going to do anything after six months. Okay, what's the difference if you're saying I could do it in two years? I mean, what, there's nothing there. So, you know, we respect the business. We want the business to stay in Hoyoke. It's my understanding the business is going to stay there. The number of jobs, there are 24 jobs. We don't want to lose them. And the VP said there was no intention to move the jobs out of Hoyoke. And frankly, that was because the machinery in there is so enormous, it would take thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of dollars just to move the equipment out of that building. So, with that, I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Could you, or perhaps Council McGivern, touch on one question, which is, what would happen to the $140,000 loan to Hedic? And if somebody could touch on that in their remarks? Council McGivern has the floor.
The former owners of Specialty Loose Leaf reneged on the $145,000 loan that Hedic gave to them. There's a little history to that. They, Bob Thompson and his partner had saved Specialty Loose Leaf, and I commend Council Bartley. He hit the nail on the head on, I think, the recommendations of the committee. But getting back to your question before I can make a few comments myself, Mr. President, when they came before Hedic, before the city, this body passed the original economic development plan, they wanted to save Specialty Loose Leaf, which they did. There were two original loans which they paid back, which totaled over $100,000, and were doing fine until they ran into some problems for different reasons, and the problems forced them out of business. The $145,000, we tried a number of ways. Court action, the law department was great and instrumental in trying to figure out how to assess the personal assets of the gentleman who had the loan, how to assess the assets of the company, which eventually, there were none because the city took over the building with the money that was owed in back taxes, the gas and electric sewer, and so on. So, it's an albatross, you know, to sum it up perfectly, and we do need to do something with 1 Cabot Street. But I think Council Bartley hit the nail on the head when he said, "This is not a good proposal." It was a good effort, but not, it doesn't close the deal that the city needs. This is 2.2 acres of land. It's close to 210,000 square feet of an old building that needs a roof and needs a new heating system. A lot more to it, but that's the two things that I think are the obstacles to the building being taken over. Specialty Loose Leaf belongs somewhere else, but then it's a national, national blank, but couldn't move it. That's why it was saved. Those jobs have been protected. The company has been protected. It's too expensive to move and to get the payback, the cost of the move would be to whoever owns Specialty Loose Leaf. But when he come in, and David hit it right, and a fine gentleman, and I know they're making the effort to save the business, but they don't know what to do with the building. So, eventually, the roof is going to give, and we're going to have an Essex house. Eventually, the roof is going to give, and they're going to have to move out, because it's going to destroy everything inside that building as it is. The heating system is something that, you know, they're patching and doing, doing as they go. The reverter clause was the one that, as much as I wanted to do something with 1 Cabot Street, the reverter clause was the one that, one part that killed me was, because they get the $10,000 back if they walk out. What kind of reverter clause is that? You know, I mean, $10,000 is nothing. It's not going to help us in the long run, but to have to give it back to them is insult to injury. So, I think it needs to be negotiated. It doesn't need to go to auction, because there's just not a lot of interest out there for all the reasons we just talked about. But I hope that the mayor and the Economic Development Department can get together and come up with a better deal, perhaps get more tenants in there, which would make more sense. Help them find more tenants on the space that they're not occupying, especially since the Department of Transportation from the state moved out, and none of that rent was put back into the roof. The vice president did tell us they are paying some rent to the city, which, not that we want to be a landlord in the long run, but it does help to, while we're trying to negotiate a deal that makes a lot more sense. But in fairness, I think the committee's recommendation is, we need something better to accept anything. But we do need to do something, because we now own 1 Cabot Street, and it's time that it goes away. Kevin, back to your question, was one thing Hedic had originally been given was the ability to take over the building in order to get that, recoup some of that money. And Hedic, knowing its assets would be unprotected, said that we just couldn't take over it, knowing that the roof, the conditioner roof was in, and the heating system itself, without having someone that would be able to come in, buy it, and renovate it. So, Hedic is eating the loss. It's one of, I think, over the last 40 years, I think, one of two loans I've seen that Hedic has eaten. But unfortunately, it's part of the business, and, you know, we'll do our best to help out.
Was there a personal guarantee given on that loan?
There was.
This person long and gone, or?
That was explored. My memory's not as good as it used to be. I'd refer that to the law department. I know we tried something. It might have been before, Kara. I know we did, we did ask the law department to help us out, and there were personal guarantees. There were two partners. One partner bought the other partner out, you know, seeing what was coming, and then I think took the necessary legal steps to protect himself.
Kara, maybe at some point, you could just email a little update or something, or a little historical on the Hedic portion of it.
Council Jordaine. Port information. If we can act Rule Number 7 of our own city rules, where you have to stand and address the city council at the podium.
I'm tired at the moment, but did you want to be heard? Since I don't want to recognize your motion.
I didn't hear a second to it.
It wasn't a motion, it was just a rule.
Council Tomlin would like to be heard. Council Tomlin.
Yeah, I passed on the rules to our new council-elect here, so he's going to be studying them over the next few weeks.
There'll be a quiz.
I really appreciate the work that the committee has done on this item, because I, you know, I saw about it, and I says, well, why wouldn't they want to, you know, take this offer? But really, Dave, you and Joe gave a great explanation of what's going on. We want to keep the jobs there, but it's something that we have to look at down the road, because, you know, this could be another building that's going to collapse eventually. But anything we can do to try to market this building, you know, with the development, and Marcos and John is important, but you really laid everything out there just to give me a better understanding of why we're not accepting this bid. So, thank you.
Under recommendation, please. Let's vote.
Yes, I'd like to shine in this. I was not here for this meeting because I was away due to a personal matter, and I signed the order, and I want to make sure that I shouldn't, I mean, if it's clear that I should have or shouldn't have, I signed that.
Oh, no, that's fine that you signed it. It was introduced. The committee had a thorough discussion of it. They're just coming back with a recommendation that, nice try, but try again.
Thank you.
That's basically what, you know, thank you, but they feel it's not quite good enough, and they'd like to have it either rebid or get more offers, and, you know.
Get some more assurances that if the building is not fixed, that we have something to pre-cool.
A sweeter deal for the city. Yep.
Thank you.
Under our fiduciary duty here. Yes, excellent. Any other thoughts, concerns, questions? Hearing none. The vote will now be on the committee recommendation. The committee recommendation is that this offer be not accepted from United Innovations, Inc., and that it be denied. And therefore, the clerk will call the roll, and I just want to remind folks that the committee recommendation was to deny. So, a yes vote will be to accept that committee recommendation and therefore deny it. A no vote will be to not accept the committee recommendation and to approve the offer. So, just remember that. If your yes vote, you're actually denying it. A no vote is to accept it. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Leahy. Lebron Martinez.
Yes.
Lacy.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Brezneren. Shatner.
Yes.
Greeney.
Yes.
Jordaine.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas.
By your vote, you have denied the offer of $10,000, and that'll be that. There were no Charter and Rules committee reports for this particular meeting, so now we're off to the motions, orders, and resolutions section of the meeting, which brings us first to item 20. Item number 20 is an order introduced by Councilor Jordaine, that the City Council advertise and post the position of city auditor. Once a pool of candidates has been developed, the City Council then interview and select a candidate.
Receive, adopt.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to receive and adopt. The personnel director shall prepare the draft advertisement and posting for the council's review. Personnel should also inform us of any civil service rules or notice that they may require to be adhered to.
Receive, adopt, refer to the personnel director.
Yep, motion's been made in second to receive, adopt, and refer to the personnel director, and that this be done as soon as possible. The only thing under commentary, I would say, as you know, there was one proposal to go forward, which was talking about a merge collector treasurer, all of this type of thing, maybe merging the city auditor position with a CFO, all of that. Public voted against doing that. And so, therefore, I think we need to go back to the original plan, which is that we have, the City Council appoints an auditor. We've had an acting auditor for quite a period of time now. The council needs to do its duty and to fill the auditor position and move forward. So, this order would allow us to begin that process to get candidates, and then have an auditor to select from. And then, we're also going to have to make sure that this is in compliance with civil service, and to make sure that that component is reviewed as well, because historically, this has had a component with civil service in the past. Council McGivern.
I agree with the order, Mr. President. I know you and I have talked a lot about this. It's high time that we go after and appoint a full-time auditor. I think our acting auditor's done a wonderful job, but the checks and balances depend upon the process being played out and appointing someone. Usually, these interviews go to the public service, but I think this position's so important that if everybody's willing, as you're proposing here, we should interview as a body, and eventually, we elect, appoint as a body. There was a lot of confusion the first go-around with the salary. Can we ask the personnel director to make sure it's not what's in the budget? You know, the ordinance allows and gives us the flexibility of a range, and the budget is just reflecting what would have been needed for the balance of a year. I don't think it even has enough in there for the low end of the salary range.
So, we'll put the full salary range that's allowed under the ordinance?
Yeah, I think that might attract more candidates, if they know that we have some flexibility to start them somewhere in the middle, or somewhere according to what they bring to the table.
Great point. And then, on your first point, I also agree. I think this is a really important job, and absolutely, I'd be happy if that's the will of the body, that we, once we get candidates, that we have interviews as a whole group, and I'd be happy to have a special meeting of the city council, and we can do that, and then we can make sure we do a very thorough job with that. Council Lacy, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I just had a really quick question. I don't know if I heard you correctly or not, but the ballot measure was about moving from an elected to appointed treasurer.
Yep.
It didn't really touch on the CFO app aspect of it all.
Yeah, let me just touch on that for a minute. I think what you'll see under myself and Mayor Morse's proposal originally was that we were going to reshape sort of the finance department. It was going to be a, well, let me back up. The collector treasurer position, right, that was going to be go from elected to appointed, then we were going to merge the collector treasurer position into a collector treasurer. At least that was going to be the plan. Voters said, no, we don't want to do that. We want to keep this elected. And so, now we have an elected treasurer. We have an appointed tax collector, and that was going to be appointed by the city council. The yin and yang to that, in the balance of this structure, was going to be creation also of a CFO position that would ultimately be appointed by the mayor. That was going to consolidate the city auditor job into the CFO position, okay? This was under our proposal. And that appointment formerly of ours would now go to him, okay? But this all sort of collapsed when the collector treasurer position now is not going to happen. And so, I can't see me supporting, at least I can speak for myself, giving the mayor now the auditor position to appoint in light of the fact that the collector treasurer position will not be coming to the council. So, the voters, you know, they spoke, and we have to respect that, and they decided to stay with an elected treasurer. So, I don't know what the re, you know, where we're going to go with anything else on it, but we'll have to take sort of baby steps. But what we do know is that we do need a city auditor, and we do have to go about filling that position at this point. Council Bacon.
Just as a point of information, do we want to put a date certain as far as the ad being placed?
Well, I'd ask that the ad be as soon as possible placed, once they get all the specs and things, and I'm happy to work with Bob.
Because, I mean, they have posted it a couple of times, so it shouldn't be a lengthy endeavor.
Council McGivern.
It's a good point, but it's not just, you know, an ad, local ad. There's periodicals that reach out throughout the country, or at least reach out throughout the region, that we need to hit their timing, because they don't come out on a weekly, monthly basis.
I would like it to go in the MMA journal. That, to me, is the really good one, where they really post, huh? We're not?
No, we cut that.
Well, maybe we'll have to.
We still get to Bacon.
They probably still would let us put in an ad, though, if they want our money.
Non-member eight.
But that is a really good journal. You have to pay for those, by the way, even if you're a member. So, probably not going to be a problem anyways, but we should look at that one in particular. But there's also collectors and all these different types of associations. There's one for auditors. You know, we could look at it that way as well.
On the motion.
Yeah, Council McGee just wanted to be here, too.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if we have to put in the order or not, that we address that specific point. Last time, it was put in the Republican a week before we were going to do interviews, and it was posted on our webpage. We need to advertise.
Right.
Realistically.
Right. Yeah, real advertising. Yeah. Okay.
That webpage isn't good enough?
It's nice. It's real nice. Laughable.
Yeah.
Maybe we should hire a headhunter.
Headhunter, maybe. Maybe we need to go to a headhunter. You know, and you pay a commission of, you know, 15, 20% on a job, you know, so the job pays $75,000 to start or whatever. You pay 10 grand commission or whatever. Corporate America does that with headhunters. That's routinely done. Any other thoughts? Okay, all in favor of adopting?
Aye.
Opposed?
So moved, adopted.
Item 21. Item 21, that the personnel and assessors please notify us as soon as possible as to the status of the advertisement for the empty assessor position. Let us know when we can expect a list of candidates to interview.
Receive, adopt, refer to both personnel and the assessors. Please add my name to that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm on it. Well, hold on. Let me just back up one minute, because I'm with where we're going, but I just want to point out, the assessors did give me this report. We actually do have one candidate so far on the advertisement. Yes, from Hoyoke too, by the way, and that is, that candidate's name has come in late file. So, I'm So I'm recommending that that go to Personnel to interview this person. Um, this, as you know, is, is going to be for the third assessor position I'm recommending, and hopefully the body will support, some sort of modest stipend of maybe five hundred to a thousand dollars a year. This person attends a few of the required meetings. It's not gonna be a full-time position like we used to have, it's not gonna be anything like that, but strictly to make us in compliance with the law and to get, uh, make us in compliance with the outside auditor. So that's the thinking on this. Um, I would recommend we could look at this one candidate that we have. We could continue to push the issue. I, I think we need to, we can need to continue perhaps to look for more, uh, candidates, but I wanted to give you the report that we do have one person who has stepped forward.
You wanna take the late file up now, Kevin?
We could.
Just to get it over with?
All right.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow us to go to the late file communication regarding the assessor position, as well as to allow us to, uh, debate and discuss that issue this evening. It's gonna be coming from Mr. Delude, right there. Hey, you just went by it. Late file B. Okay, that's late file B. Uh, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. All right, late file B is a communication, I stand corrected, that's another one from the assessors. There's another one. That's regarding the certification. Okay, late file C. Late file C is a communication from the assessors. It's forwarding to us the name of Maureen Cronin of fourteen Philip Drive, Hoyoke, who has applied for the position of assessor. She is currently an assistant to the Associate Assessor in South Hadley. And has been a clerk and other different positions, um, in various assessor's offices. So, uh, I would recommend that this be sent to Public Service.
Second, Jimmy Smolofek.
That was your motion? Okay. Motion on late file C is to receive and refer to, uh, the Public Service Committee. Any discussion on that? Counselor Lisi?
So the, the order's being amended, then, to have the, um, Public Service Committee conduct the interview as opposed to Personnel?
No, we're, no, we're gonna, we're gonna do it in Public Service.
Public Service has always done.
Yeah, we're gonna do the, Public Service will do the interview of this candidate and, and any other ones. Um, I think we should continue to solicit for candidates.
Until the, until the position's filled, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we feel comfortable with this person, great. If we don't, the, the search continues. Counselor McGivern?
I, I think you answered my question, but it, it, you know, it's up to the body, is do we, should we advertise before we interview? Should we make sure, you know, it's been advertised?
It's been being advertised, this is who we came up with so far.
I'm just not too sure how she came forward. I know she came through the assessors, but did they put an ad in, did the Personnel put an ad?
Yeah, Personnel put an ad out, and, um, I, we passed it here previously, uh, about maybe a month ago, and, uh, they did put out an ad. We got Ms. Cronin, but that was the only candidate.
Typically, when that happens, Personnel brings the candidates back to us, not the, the assessors himself, but that's fine.
I told him to step on it because, you know, we had an auditor, our acting auditor, who felt like, you know, the sky was falling, so I said, "Get him to us as quickly as possible," and, uh, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah. So anyways, um, any other discussion on sending, uh, Mrs., Ms. Cronin's name to Public Service? Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, so she's in Public Service to be interviewed, and now we're back on item twenty-one, which was mine. Um, we do have the status currently, but, you know, we could amend this to say, you know, continue to advertise and get it, continue to solicit candidates, how about that?
Until the position's filled.
Until the position's filled, okay, very good.
Please add my name to that one?
Sure, adding Counselor Lisi's name to this. And that we have a friendly amendment, um, that the Personnel and Assessors, uh, please continue to advertise, uh, for the empty assessor position and, uh, let us know as soon as there's, uh, ongoing candidates for this position. Continue to forward those to us. So all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
So moved. All in favor of adopting and referring the amendment to Personnel and the assessors, continuing under discussion. Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, just on that, uh, talking to the Public Service, um, Counsel Bresnahan and, um, on that committee, we'll try to get a meeting up in, uh, December, early December, as soon as possible, 'cause we have some other items that we gotta take up.
Great. All right. So all in favor of adopting as amended, item twenty-one?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number twenty-two, introduced by Counselordane, that the G and E please install streetlights on the pole adjacent to twelve Winthrop Street, as well as on the pole at the top of Ridgewood Avenue near the back entrance to Community Field. That they also evaluate the possibility of putting in lights on other poles on Winthrop Street and Bay State Road where there is, uh, excessive darkness. There has been a rise in criminal activity in this area. Thank you in advance for your assistance. I would request that this be received, adopted, referred to the G and E and to the mayor.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Um, speaks for itself unless there's any other discussion. All in favor of adopting?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a point of information on the previous order. I have the.
The assessor one?
Yes, I have the Public Service Agenda for the nineteenth at six, and it's item eleven relative to the appointment of Maureen Cronin.
Wow, that's quick. I didn't even send it to committee and it's already on the agenda.
It's there.
I expect nothing less.
That's just.
That's why I'm.
Efficiency at work.
I mean, that's a level of efficiency not known to.
Take that, chickabye.
He anticipated our action, apparently.
Apparently, good, mind reader. All right, item number twenty-four, introduced by Counselordane, that the Water Department please work with their legal counsel to draft an amendment to their existing special act to add on management, control, and oversight of wastewater services in the city of Hoyoke, so that this amendment may be considered by the City Council and Mayor for adoption as a special act amendment. Please do this as soon as humanly possible.
Have you added it to that?
Absolutely, adding Counsel Leahy.
Three.
Counsel Bacon.
Grainey, four.
Yep.
Lisi? Did you get Lisi?
Yep. Absolutely, adding Counsel Lisi.
Yeah, you got me, Kevin.
Adding Counsel Bartley.
Kevin, you can put me on, too.
Adding Counsel Tomlin.
Counsel Soto, please.
Adding Counsel Chetna.
Did you get Alexander and Grainey both on there?
Yes, I got you both on there. Yeah, Counsel McGee. Okay, so the Water Department is working on this already, and they will hope to have something to us soon. Um, they do not oppose doing something like this, they just want, they would prefer that it be done, keeping basically the Water Department management and control similar to the way it is today, but I told them, "Give us your proposal." And so they're drafting that with their legal counsel, and they are working on that, and then they would like to make a presentation to us at a future meeting, and then we can listen to what they have to say as a possible solution. So I would recommend that this be received and go to Finance.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to receive and refer this to Finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And, uh, let's see now, item number twenty-five. Item number twenty-five comes to us from Counsel LeBron Martinez, and that is that a handicap sign be placed in front of one hundred Beach Street for Philip Manzi.
Receive, send to ordinance?
Aye.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
Copy to the Commission on Disability, sorry.
Yes, sure. Uh, motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer to ordinance with a copy to the Disabilities Commission. Any discussion? Straightforward.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number twenty-six is an order introduced by Counsel McGee that the Burn Memorial JAG two thousand fifteen grant be authorized. Would you like to send that to Finance?
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor is to receive and refer to Finance. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Item number twenty-eight is an order introduced by Counsel McGee that the G and E replace and repair the light at the corner of Lexington and Jefferson. G and E and Mayor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the G and E with a copy to the Mayor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item twenty-nine is introduced by Counsel McGee that the Law Department and Park and Rec Department look into establishing a community garden at Morgan Park. We heard a little bit about this earlier, but, uh, it's look into, not do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and fair, and you're into fairness to you, yep. So you would like us to send this to, adopt and send it to the Law Department and Park and Rec, or you wanna refer it to a committee? What would you like to do?
Could this go to Public Service, so there can be a, some kind of a discussion about whatever the legal and Park and Rec come up with?
How about we send it to Public Service with a copy to Park and Rec and the Law Department? Does that sound good? Okay, so motion on the floor is to receive, refer to Public, uh, Service with a copy to the Law Department and Park and Rec. Without further ado, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number thirty is introduced by Counsel McGee that the DPW repair the sidewalk in front of the driveway at fifteen eighteen to White Street as the sidewalk dips and is a hazard.
Adopt and send the DPW to fix as soon as possible.
Okay. Motion on the floor is been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the DPW, uh, to take care of right away. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number thirty-one is introduced by Counselors McGivern and McGee that the Conservation Commission, DPW, and City Engineer come before the City Council to discuss potential, the potential new access road for university apartments and the wetlands surrounding the potential new road. Ooh, I'm interested to know about this. Where, what, are they, is this something, there's actually a drawing or something for a road in University Park?
I think a motion we see before to committee on public safety?
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to receive, refer to public safety.
You'll go to a number committee.
No teaser, is there like a, a statement about where the road would go in and out?
If I, if I could, real, real quick, um.
Just a little bit.
There's, if, if you come in off of Jarvis and, um, I'm gonna say Bassett Road, you know, you know, meets, there's a curve in it. It's, um, right before you head towards Solancha, you, when you take a right onto, uh, the corner street that brings you to Bassett, is it Ard, not Ardern, it's, uh, Mr. Melman, come on.
Alma?
Alma, thank you. If you, as you take the turn, as you're going, as you're hitting Bassett Road, Alma goes straight for one house. And the City Engineer, um, when that house was built, it was on a, what we think is a paper street, um, being told, and we actually adapted part of that Alma to extend into for that house to be built, to give them frontage. That was when Mr. Rundle was the City Engineer. According to the property owners of University Apartments, they told the owner of that house that they're looking to extend out of their back parking lot, a road entrance egress at that point. Now, that brought into a lot of things, uh, there's wetlands back there, 'cause that, that's the part of the, uh, the old golf course that couldn't be developed. There's, uh, a lot of issues of, of, that road's not that wide at all, and it would be taking some property that is now very well groomed and landscaped. One budding property just happens to be the person that sits where that guy is next to you up there for many years, uh, Mr. Welch's, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Welch's property. And so there's, there's a lot of questions. So I, I talked to, I talked to Todd, and we just thought we'd bring everybody in, try to get all the answers for the, the property owners, but the real key is that whole area can be a cut through real easy as it, as it stands now. This would make it a bigger cut through from the lights on East Hampton Road, right where ninety-one is, into University Apartments, right up to Jarvis.
Right.
And I, I don't, I would think.
I wonder what the people on Alma and Bassett Road would think of that.
They're gonna be up in hours.
Sounds like a great discussion for committee.
Well, I just wanted to.
Wow.
I'm sorry, man, but this is going on.
I'll take the hit on that, I asked.
For the maker of orders that starts with whereas.
Where would we be without those?
I'll take that hit, that was one of my golden rules. I apologize to the Ward Seven lame duck counselor.
No teasers allowed. You asked for a teaser, no teasers.
Yes.
It's ten o'clock.
All right, great, so, uh, motion on the floor is to receive and refer to public safety. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item thirty-two?
Can we do abbreviated or staccato readings of all the rest of the orders, since they're all going to committee?
Thirty-two from Counsel Bacon, that, uh, the intersection of Appermont and two oh two be evaluated for a traffic light and the cost be determined.
Refer to DPW and the engineer and the Police Department for a traffic study?
Okay. Receive, adopt, is, is the motion, refer to the DPW and City Engineer?
You don't want it in committee to hear the result?
Um, but I thi, don't we have to have the study done through the Police Department?
Well, you could ask them for that, but, uh, you could also send this to committee and send the committee copy out to them. If you wanna send it to public safety.
It would have to be ordinance, then, right? Given, um, adding, the contemplation of adding a light.
This is, there's no traffic light there now, right?
Right, or can I just send it to safety?
Public safety.
You could send it for safety now and see what the study comes back as, and then go to ordinance later.
And then if it needs money, yeah.
Maybe the decision is, "Don't do it."
Right. Okay.
All right. So motion on the floor is to receive, refer to public safety with a copy to the DPW and City Engineer. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item thirty-three is an order introduced by Counsel Bacon at a stop sign at the end of Lynnan Drive, per recommendation of DPW and Engineering. I believe this would be going to ordinance?
Yes, and, uh, receive, adopt, and refer to ordinance, and this was a recommendation out of the department.
Sure. Motion on the floor is to receive, adding Counsel Bartley's name to this?
I had a couple of calls on that.
All right.
It's a, there's a stop sign at the end of a, a T?
No, it's a quasi-rotary.
Right. It's like, it's like three, four streets that come.
It really is a rotary.
Spot there.
But it's not.
Kinda is a rotary, actually, yeah.
But it's not set up as a rotary, so it's.
But a de facto. Okay, motion on the floor is to receive, uh, and to, uh, refer to the Ordnance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number thirty-four is introduced by Counsel Bacon that the speed limit on Lower Westfield Road be reduced from thirty to twenty, uh, for the portion from Homestead to, that leads to the Elks.
Um, receive, adopt, and I think refer again to the engineer, or refer to public safety with a copy to engineer.
You're gonna need an ordinance change.
To do a, change the, the speed limit from thirty to twenty?
Okay.
I would think, right?
You have to do a study first, no?
Yes.
Well, why don't you send it to ordinance with a copy to the engineer, right?[1657.62] Well, why don't you send it to ordinance with a copy to the engineer, right?
That's fine.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to receive, refer to ordinance with a copy to the city engineer to do the evaluation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Suspend the rules and take thirty-five and thirty-six as a package, please.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, uh, and to take thirty-five and thirty-six as a pa- as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Uh, thirty-five is from Counsel Valentin. She's seeking to put a handicap sign in front of sixteen Clinton Avenue for Robert Fitzpatrick Junior. And thirty-six is to put a handicap sign in front of one ninety-five Suffolk Street for Maria Vasquez.
Refer to ordinance with copies to Commission of Disabilities, please.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to receive thirty-five and thirty-six, refer them both to ordinance with a copy to the Disabilities Commission. Any discussion?
Straightforward.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Uh, Mister President, can we take thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-two as a package, please, to suspend the rules?
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll go on ordinance.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to take thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-two as a package. Uh, all in favor of that?
Aye.
So moved. Thirty-seven is from Counsel Bartley, that the city council order the removal of a handicap parking sign at five seven, five dash seven Martin Street. Thirty-eight is that the city council consider amending Hoyoke ordinances to change the no parking law between Edbert Drive and Mayor Field. Thirty-nine is that the city council amend the parking ordinance on Westfield Road near Blessed Sacrament that will allow parking, uh, during weekend masses and will provide additional parking space for them. Item number forty-two is from Counsel Bartley as well, that the city council consider deleting the no left turn ordinance on Whiting Farms Road at Kmart Plaza, and that the city council consider ordaining a left turn only there. Okay?
Ordinance, please.
Uh, motion on the floor is to send all of those to ordinance.
Maybe add it to the Kmart one?
Okay, adding Counsel Vacan's name to item number forty-two.
Thank you.
Sure. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of referring to ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
And Mister President, can we take, uh, forty and forty-three as a package, please?
Second.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to take forty and forty-three as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item forty comes to us from Counsel Bartley. City engineer provide a recommendation to improve and make safer the intersection of Hitchcock and Martin Street. Um, he goes on to explain the problems. Forty-three is that due to constituent concern, city engineer provide a recommendation to improve the intersections at South Maple and Parento Drive.
Um, I'd like to, um, send these to the, uh, DPW and the city engineer and, uh, copy to the public safety committee, please, for discussion.
Could I recommend sending them to committee with a copy to those individuals? Yeah, 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 just kind of reverse that, I think, yeah. Okay, motion on the floor is to take forty and forty-three, send them to the public safety committee with copies to the DPW and city engineer. Uh, any discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item forty-one from Counsel Bartley is that the-
He's not over here.
DPW install temporary stop lines on South in front of Elmwood Towers.
Uh, I, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adopt this tonight, refer it to DPW, and with a copy to the mayor's office, please.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
And we can do that, I'm assuming? Temporary stop lines?
Yes, yes, we can do that.
We don't need a traffic regulation to do that?
No, we don't need that. May I?
By all means.
The road's paved over, uh, and they haven't put the stop lines back in there, so-
Oh, so the ordinance is there, it's just that it's in the midst of the paving.
Just paved, just paved the stop lines.
Just throw something up in the meantime.
This has been a-
It's a problem.
Well, it's just, yeah, it's just a problem, so-
Okay.
It's a, it's a big problem.
Message received. Okay, um, motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW due to the emergency nature of this, that they go ahead and do this until the permanent lines are put in. Counsel Alexander.
Counsel Tomlin, actually.
Counsel Tomlin. Oh, it's like a pass of basketball.
Tommy this time, huh? Um, if Counsel Bartley don't mind, uh, I could put my name on that, too. I was driving either one way, down, going down towards, um, High Street, High Street, I believe, or coming back, and the, the light was there, and you're almost right on top of the stop, you know, on the crosswalk, so you don't realize where the, the stop line is, so. I, I was, I was coming back, going up towards, um, North Hampton Street, and there's, there is a problem there, so I think I should be taking care of ASAP, yeah.
I think Counsel Bartley agrees.
I do agree, and, and-
So, yeah, go ahead, David.
It is our temporary, Kevin, Mister President, because we, this, this body thankfully approved the CDBG grant for seventy-five thousand dollars to improve the crosswalk, the PVTA bus stop on the Elmwood Tower side, and then a new traffic light with a, with a, you know, get rid of that dilapidated pole that's in there. And it would have been done this spring, uh, spring, it would have been done this fall before we had a change in, uh, city engineer position, so.
Right.
That's where we are. So that's why it's temporary.
All in favor of adopting this and referring it to the DPW?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Brings us to the late file section of the meeting. Uh, we have a few. First one up is A, that's from yours truly, Counsel Jordan. Order that an ordinance be created establishing no parking on the odd side of Beacon Avenue from the corner of Camby Street and Beacon Ave, and the driveway-
For the ordinance?
To twenty-seven, twenty-nine Camby. Motion is to receive, late file A, and refer it to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file B is introdu- is, uh, communication from the assessors. It's going on to tell us that the state has approved and certified their values. Uh, this is the Department of Revenue. So we could just receive this.
Finance.
Receive, refer to finance?
Second.
That's fine. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer to finance. And just so people are aware, that's one of the steps necessary before we can set the tax rates. But we have other steps, like we have to balance the budget first, and we're gonna need the free cash certification before we do that. And then the next step after that will be to have, um, the tax classification hearing, and then a tax classification vote. The assessors have requested our second meeting in December to set the tax rates. Um, but who knows at this point, you know? Yeah, yeah, it could be another Saturday meeting down here, uh, December thirty-first, or who knows, but, uh, yeah, at this rate. So we'll see. So get, uh, drink your eggnog, because you could be down here for a, uh, for a, a tax rate setting meeting. Okay, so that is, uh, motion to send, uh, to receive that and refer that to finance. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, our last item on the agenda for this evening is, oh, excuse me, one more. Late file D is from an applicant, applicant, Brian Stebbins. He resides at ten Labrie Lane, Hoyoke. He is seeking to put office spate in, space in the Pood, uh, the professional office. Formally, if you'll recall, seventeen oh seven North Hampton Street, as you know, used to be the law office of George Neves, our former and deceased and beloved colleague. He passed. His wife, Luann, is seeking to sell the house to Brian Stebbins of Labrie Lane. Mr. Stebbins wants to get a special permit in the Pood to locate on the first floor of that building.
Refer to DGR.
Okay. So, uh, just FYI, this is the request coming in, uh, to purchase the place and to get a special permit to do, um, he does like financial services, so just FYI, that's kind of the nature of the business. So, uh, motion on the floor is to receive late file D, this special permit application from Mr. Stebbins, and refer it to DGNR. Okay? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file E, promise now to be the last one. Ooh, somebody signed my name onto this. Counselors Jordan, Tomlin, and McGee, late file, that park and rec department, the G and E, install a light, oh, yes, I remember this one, at the dog park at Community Field. So suspend the rules for us to take final action on this. All in favor?
So moved.
Okay. Uh, request that, uh, motion to, that's be adopted and referred to the G and E with a copy to the mayor.
So moved.
This is to put a light at the dog park at Community Fields. Is a dog a person? Yeah, but, you know, I think the problem is now, though, it's getting, normally I would agree with you, like in the summer months, that's like nine o'clock. But now it's like five, and it's dark. So, you know, you get out of work and you can't, you're used to taking the dog to the dog park, so a light would be appreciated there. So, um, if there's no major discussion on this, all in favor of adopting?